I'll hand it over to Commissioner Oliver King for the invocation, but prior to that, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge what happened in Minneapolis yesterday with the violence at Annunciation School and Church, and just wanted to say that this board as the Chair and the County of Kent, our thoughts and prayers are with those who were affected and those who lost their lives, certainly terrifying for those of us that have young children. And I'd like to ask that we take a moment of silence in honor of and memory of those who were injured and who lost their lives. Thank you. Now calling Commissioner Oliver King.
Good morning, everyone. I have the honor of asking City Manager Mark Washington to do our invocation. Before he comes up, please let me share. City Manager Mark Washington has been the City Manager for Grand Rapids, Michigan since October 1st, 2018, and has worked in two other cities over his 30 years of experience in the public sector. City Manager Washington holds a Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration from Tarleton, correct me if I'm wrong, State University, a Master's Degree in Business Administration from Amberton University, a Master's of Arts Degree, and a Doctorate in Education from Southwest Baptist Theological Seminary. He is a member of several professional community boards and organizations, and is also an ordained minister in the African Methodist Episcopal Church, and currently worships at First Community AME Church in Grand Rapids. I have had the honor of hearing him minister.
City Manager Washington?
Thank you. Good morning to your Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for having me this morning and is honored to offer invocation on this day. Let us pray. Eternal God, our help in ages past, our enduring hope for years to come, our shelter from every stormy blast in our internal home. We gather today to seek your guidance as this body serves as the elected and appointed civil servants of the people of Kent County. We pray for the safety and continuity of our community and for all who keep it secure and thriving. We especially lift up those who have been affected by the tragedy in Minneapolis this morning. We ask your enduring grace would abide, and your healing hand will give them comfort and hope as they recover. Grant us the gift of civility that we may engage with grace and understanding even when perspectives differ from our own. We ask that you bless our efforts, that our work may foster a thriving economy that is welcoming to life, liberty, justice, and a pursuit of happiness. And still of each of us a deep respect for democracy that we may respectfully consider the voices of those that we represent and uphold the principles of fair governance. When faced with disagreement, give us the wisdom to listen with open hearts and minds, and the strength to find solutions and consensus for the common good. Help us to move past any bitterness or resentment when the temptation to lean into or dwell on personal feelings arise, that our personal will will yield to your divine will, that not our will will be done, but yours will be done on earth in this county as it is in heaven. I'm grateful for the many resources that you have provided, my dear friends in the county, for public services as they deliberate upon their fiscal plan today. Allow the work of government to continue in the mundane, but also in the seemingly somehow miraculous ways that we may, despite our individual efforts, have a collective efforts to improve our county. Both great and small, we are humbled and reminded of the impact of decisions on every person, district, city township, charter township, and village. While acknowledging the diversity of faith traditions that may exist in this room today, I'm grateful to use my First Amendment liberty of the free religious, free expression of religion, and offer this prayer invoking the peaceful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver King, and thank you, City Manager Washington, for the invocation. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Special Order of Business, and we will start with Kaylee from the Probate Court. Good morning, Kaylee.
Good morning, everybody. Oops. Can you hear me okay? All right. I'm Kaylee Gashow, and I'm the Probate Register and Administrator for the Kent County Probate Court, just across the street over there. And I'm just going to talk to you today about the Probate Court, some of our wins, some things we are working on, and projects we have going on today. And then I will transition to talk about the Guardianship Program and what we have going on over there. All right. So our mission at the Kent County Probate Court is to provide an accessible and person-centered venue to secure the peaceful, sound, and efficient resolution of matters where every individual is treated with dignity and respect. With that mission, we strive to give back to the community in multiple ways. And in 2024, we were pleased to give back by the judges and I providing lectures and trainings to local hospitals, the Grand Rapids Bar Association, the Michigan Judicial Institute, and many others. One thing that I'm super proud of that we did was we held a mental health summit, and that included people from around the community, local hospitals, Pine Rest, Forest View members, Network 180 members, and the Probate Court, and many others, EMS, GRPD, the Sheriff's Department. All of these individuals met in one location and kind of discussed the mental health issues that are going around in Kent County, and how we can better collaborate to combine resources to help those folks who need help. And so this is, we've done this before, but we're trying to make this an annual event, and this is the second year we've had it consecutively. So it's something that we'd like to do two times a year, just to touch base with everyone, especially with the new facilities that are opening up in the county. It's just important to stay on track and on base and make sure we're all collaborating so that these resources get used. I also provide a bi-monthly training for family members or friends who are serving as guardians or conservators for individuals. As you can imagine, it's a challenging job to be a guardian or a conservator for a family member or a friend, and it's not easy. There's a lot of paperwork, there's a lot of forms, and if you're not used to the court system, it can be definitely overbearing. So I hold just a Zoom training, and I go through the forms, what paperwork is required to be filed, you know, the fees with that, and then how to fill out some of the forms. There's an annual accounting that's required for conservatorships, and it can be a lot, you know, especially if you've never done it. So I go through how to account for that and how to get the most out of being a conserver and a guardian. We also do a Toys for Tots Drive every holiday season, and then this last year, we did a holiday drive for our public protected individuals who are part of the Public Guardian Program. So they're the individuals that we serve on behalf of Kent County, and these individuals truly have no one. You know, they don't have family or friends who are willing to serve as guardian conservators, so many of them don't have those holiday gatherings to attend to. So between the Probate Court staff and the guardians themselves, we gathered up some items and made sure that they had at least something to open up on the holiday season. The Kent County Probate Court, we are a court of statutory jurisdiction, and we handle kind of a wide variety of items. For the most part, it's decedent estates, trust proceedings, guardianships, conservatorships, and then petitions for mental health. We also do name changes and drain appeals. I had my first drain appeal this year. It doesn't happen very often, but it was actually very interesting to learn about, and hopefully, we don't have another one for a while because it's a lot of work, but it is interesting that the Probate Court handles that. And we also do election precinct returns with the clerk here, and so that's always fun to get to do as well. But just, yeah, kind of like a little bit of a hodgepodge at the end with Probate Court, but we're happy to do it and enjoy doing it as well. A few of our department's strategic goals include always improving and expanding customer service. Right now, we are in the process of Operation Paperless, which I will talk about more in a little bit, but just trying to expand access to justice for the community of Kent County in general, whether that be being able to file online and not have to come down to the court, or not have to mail in, like snail mail documents, having that electronic portal where individuals can pay their fees and submit documents online. That's something we are actively working towards. Who knew? How many hurdles you have to jump through to get that going, but we are working on it, and it's something that's going to be a huge, a huge success for the county. And that ties in with efficiency as well, just making it, making the court process as streamless or as seamless as possible, just so that folks who come to our counter really can get the most out of their time and not have to, you know, wait around for hours. We're trying to separate ourselves from experiences with the Secretary of State's office, or maybe, maybe other offices that we all have to go to, because no one wants to go, you know, to court. It's a mandated thing, so we want to make it as pleasant as possible. And then, of course, continuing regulatory compliance is a goal of ours as well. In 2024, we had 6,355 new case filings. So these are brand-new cases that were filed within the Probate Court, and this is a 42% increase from 20, sorry, 2008. So
It's a new destination.
I'm here. So this is a big increase over the past 20 years, but it's definitely, it's been a gradual jump. It's not a huge jump year to year, so we've been able to stay on top of the growing caseload. We've also had over 4,000 hearings, and this has doubled over the past few years due to the additional judgeship that we added. So those hearing numbers, I suspect, will stay about the same over the next few years unless we add an additional judge at some point. As far as active cases go, we have 14,248 active cases, and what that means are, that's cases that carry over year to year. Some of our mental health cases are open for quite some time while individuals receive the help and care they need, or guardianships and conservatorship cases, those can go on for years as well. So those cases are the ones that keep that 14,000 number pretty stable from year to year. And then here's just a pie chart kind of showing the breakdown of our case types. Definitely, estates and trusts are a big chunk of what we do, but guardianships and developmentally disabled guardianships, as well as mental health proceedings, are there as well. The civil actions, that green slice of the pie, is miscellaneous matters like the drain appeal, name changes, also wills. When people drop off wills at the counter, we hold them for safekeeping for them, just as a safe storage place, and also protective orders. Our goals for the coming year are to expand services, like I spoke about earlier with that electronic filing portal that we would like to have in place early in 2026, if not sooner. And then also Operation Paperless. We currently went live with Operation Paperless on August 4th, so it's still pretty new, still working out some of the bumps, but it is great. Multiple people can be in one file at the same time, doing multiple things. There's no where's this file, or who has it, or is it on the fourth floor or the ninth floor? It's just there, and it's awesome. So working out some kinks with that, but it's just been amazing. So we are working this next year to convert all of our case types and all of our older files as well, paperless, so that it truly can be a paperless system and accessible for staff anywhere. So that has been going great. We are continuing to convert case types as we go. And another goal, of course, is the customer service, just increasing the customer experience and improving on it when we can. And then also to attract new guardians to the Guardianship Program. We typically attract around five to seven new public guardians each year, but we also lose five to seven public guardians each year. This year, we had quite a few retire, actually. So people who had been in the program for 10, 15, 20 years have retired, and so it's a big gap to fill those shoes for individuals who've been with us for so long. And then just moving on to talk more about the Guardianship Program. Our public guardians provide guardianship and conservatorship services for adult residents who live within Kent County and has no one else to serve them in that capacity. So our public guardians help provide these people with housing solutions, with transportation arrangements, and other services within the community. We do, we have a guardianship review specialist who goes and reviews guardianships for public guardians and for family members and friends. It's everybody. And so she writes reports every three years on these individuals, how they're doing. And so I received a few of these reports from our public guardians. And one of the staff care providers at a nursing home said about our public guardians, "I've worked with a lot of legal guardians, and Jessica is one of the better ones. She's wonderful, and everything she says she's going to do, she does. She's very nice." And then a protected individual who lives independently stated, "Denise is awesome. She makes life so much easier. She pays my rent. She looks out for me with spending money, and she's very professional." So, I mean, our guardians protect individuals from a wide range of ability, whether it's full care 24/7, or living independently in a home or an apartment. They help these individuals maintain that independence. As far as the numbers go for the Guardianship Program, in 2024, we had 255 new requests, which with our reoccurring guardians, because some of these guardians are guardians for individuals for, you know, years and years and years, that equals out to about 568 indigent cases per month. And already, just that increase from 2024 to 2025, we are at 607 indigent cases per month this year. So a big growth of individuals who just need that extra help to maintain their housing, or get Social Security, Medicaid, Medicare, those kind of supports. The demand across the board has been rising with the aging population and with family members who are either unable or unwilling to serve. And today, we have 40 public guardians in the program. Unfortunately, we're kind of stuck at that 40 number. As you can imagine, it is a lot to run this program, and it's just Courtney, who's our guardian monitor, and myself. So 40 is kind of the cap that I feel comfortable with, just overseeing. And it's, they're great people, but it's still just a lot of work to put this program on. So we're going to keep it at 40 for now, unless we end up getting additional staff to help us out. And we did want to take a moment to thank all of our funding partners, including Kent County, because you guys are a huge help and you're a reason why this program is successful. Some positive impacts of the Guardianship Program include just protecting vulnerable adults, restoring their autonomy. Some individuals just need help to get set up, and once they get their housing situated, they're able to go on and live independently. And in some cases, we were able to terminate the guardianship or conservatorship. In other cases, we can reconnect individuals with family members that they may have gone out of touch with, either to mental health issues or substance abuse issues. We get them on the right track, they reconnect with family members, and then family members can take over as guardian or conservator, and we can step back as well. So there are a lot of successes with this program, just integrating people back into the community, having it so that they can attend, you know, senior care services or festivals in the community, and also interact with other individuals as well, instead of just being stuck in their home. So it does a lot of great things, and I'm just really proud to be a part of it and to help keep it moving forward. Any questions or anything for me?
Thank you, Kaylee. Questions for Kaylee from Commissioners. Commissioner Womack?
We've had people who have come to talk about guardianship here at Kent County and some of the problems that they've seen with the guardianship. So, well, I want to thank you for your work and the positive side of this, but what have been some of the challenges? Because none of that has been mentioned, what are those challenges hearing from the public? Like, what are we going to do about some of these problems?
Sure. Yeah. Some of the biggest struggles are just maintaining proper oversight, you know, of individuals. Like I said, it's just Courtney and I, and we do it all. And with 40 people and over 1,000 protected individuals in the program, it makes it a big lift to do. I mean, we still do it. We review bank accounts, we review accounts every year, but it's just, it's definitely a heavy lift when we have, you know, other responsibilities as well to complete. So that's one of the biggest challenges. And then also maintaining people in the Guardianship Program, because it's so much work. These individuals only get paid $83 a month per case if it's an indigent person, so that is not a lot of money, and they don't want to do it for that. So just finding people who truly want to essentially volunteer and give back to the community is extremely challenging as well. Another thing is just family members, too. It's so much work to be a guardian and conservator. A lot of family members just don't want to do it, and that's been a struggle. That's why I'm trying to do those Zoom information sessions of getting family members and friends, like, hey, you can do this, and have them step up to serve for these individuals.
In 2022, with TV release report, well, it was actually just a news report, not an extensive report or study, but a news report of a guardian that had did some abuse in stealing funds from an account of a senior citizen. And just hearing from that family of what they went through, how many more cases are there like that? And I got a few more questions, because I just really think there's a lot going on in my community where I hear a lot about guardianship and due process. I went to a few hearings where it looked like there was a judge, there wasn't a jury. To my understanding, there's a judge who makes a decision, and I feel he was trying to do the best he could based upon that limited situation of time to hear from both sides. But with me living in the community and knowing more about the family members, the support for the senior citizen, I didn't agree with them putting this person in guardianship. I've seen seniors who feel that they can't make decisions, begging to stay independent or be with their children, put in guardianship. So I'm just trying to see, does the Probate Court understand that there is some major problems that need to be looked at? And sometimes, just like we said, somebody ended up in guardianship where their money was stolen, where there needs to be some more oversight of this guardianship to make sure the public's getting the service that these tax dollars are paying for?
Yes, and we did have one public guardian who was found embezzling funds. It's the first time it's happened ever in the history of the program, and I'm just as upset about it as you. It was terrible. She was sentenced. She was sentenced by Judge Murkowski, Judge Rose, and Judge Quist in the Circuit Court, and she's currently in prison with a very hefty, hefty bill of restitution to pay. And yeah, I feel your sentiments on that. I was just as upset. We actually, we sat with the victims during the sentencing and, you know, shared equal frustration with that. But luckily, you know, that is the only one in the history of our program that that's happened to. And unfortunately, the majority of people we see that steal are family members, and it's terrible. And there's a lot of situations where the family member is removed because they have embezzled and taken those funds from a parent, or a sibling, or a friend. We actually, we did start keeping track of those numbers, and I'm happy to get those to you, but it's shocking, and it's unfortunate when you see it. As far as if someone's put under guardianship and they don't want to be, I mean, that's up to the judge, but there is, you do have the ability to request for a modification or a termination of guardianship, once you're placed on one. And you can also ask for limited guardianship, or to, you know, only have guardianship over specific things. So it doesn't have to be everything in their life. It can be limited.
Okay. I'm going to make some quick short ones. I know, like here, Ben Green is looking at the time and how much you got to cover, but the uniformity of these laws are the state laws, right?
Yeah.
So that's at the state level for some of the change that people are looking for that. I've seen a family, and the preacher and his wife, they now live in Philadelphia. So it brings a question. How they started was the grandchildren, the grandmother was buying Jimmy John's and different things off her credit card for her grandchildren. The church somehow petitioned that she be taken out of this home. After the review, she was taken out of the home. The mother was facing a felony because of these charges on this credit card, but I didn't see anything over $13, $30, just food, not like big appliances or something that really benefited the mother. I think that might have later got thrown out of court, but they had the guardianship. But it brings me to this. There was, what happened is, too, when her mother died, she said her mother's heart was broken, her mother died within like 36 months. Her getting information on the funeral, she believed that that was strictly in the hands of the guardian, whether to let her know, let her know, attend, or have any say so. And there was also a guy who I think froze to death here on the West Side, outside a gas station while in guardianship. His family got in contact with me also, saying that they were shut out of funeral arrangements. So after the person dies in guardianship, a lot of people in my community really want to know, as a family, do they have any right to any information or final?
Yeah. Yes, they do. And guardianship and conservatorship actually ends at the time of death. So once that person passes away, the guardian conservator's authority completely ends. So that shouldn't happen. But I mean, if it does, then they can always petition the court.
Thank you for the information.
And I'm happy to set up a meeting if you want to talk later, too.
Yeah, for the sake of time. And it isn't taking away any of the positive things, because there are times that guardianship has definitely come in and been a very positive thing in the community, but I just didn't want to leave here today as if we don't have any hills to climb when it comes to serving families. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, welcome, Kaylee. It's great to see you thriving in your new position, and even though you are still missed.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you to the entire Probate Court for being such a great partner at the work we do at Network 180. It's important, but it's hard.
Yeah.
And then finally, so I had a dream when I was first elected, when a member of the bar says, now that there's a lawyer in there, we're going to get electronic filing within a couple of years. Was that 14 years ago? I don't remember. But at any rate, it's great to see you make that great progress. But what is the hurdle between now and online electronic filing?
There are many, but currently, they're trying to get the Circuit Court Civil Division up first, and it's, you know, we're just limited with people, you know, there's only so many bodies to work on this, and
So does a Circuit Court have to be online first before the Probate Court steps in?
Well, as far as Webtext is helping us create that portal, and as far as like the ranking of the projects go, it's Circuit Court, and then us, and we're up, and the portal, we've been testing it. Ours is up, but it's the matter of that fine tuning it and making sure it's working.
So next year's report will be looking back on the fact that we are in electronic filing?
I hope so.
Commissioner Morales?
Thank you, Chair. I know you said that you're seeing like an increase, even like this really big jump from 2024 to this year. And you mentioned some factors that were kind of attributing to that, but what do you, like, do you think that that trend's going to continue to grow, or do you see it kind of plateauing out at some point, and it's something that you feel like we should be more proactive about?
I mean, I, just with baby boomers and the aging population, it's just like, you know, nursing home, like there's such a need for housing, especially for the older community. I think they kind of go hand in hand. I mean, hopefully not, and hopefully, a lot of people can maintain independency, but just looking at the numbers, I imagine that it will continue to grow for some time.
Quick follow-up to that, if you do see that being like a projected growth, do you feel like that would be the, like, when, how many years would you let that trend continue to grow before you kind of step in and do, like, you know, increase capacity or bring out more staff, or like, what would be your window of like concern?
I mean, yeah, we're definitely there. It's just a matter of funding and, you know, what you all want, as far as the level of importance of how many cases you want us to take on. You know, it's the Kent County Guardianship Program, so it can be as bigger as small as you want it to be.
Thank you. Minority Vice Chair McLeod?
Thank you, Chair. Great to see you again, Kaylee.
Nice to see you.
Great report, good information for how the program's working for our county. I just had a couple of quick questions because my colleagues asked some of them that I, that were on my list. So a couple of things. You talked about there being forty public guardians overseen by pretty much two people. And there being over a thousand people that are in the program itself. And so I just want to be clear. So it sounds like the reviews are done every three years? Or are they done, like a full review of each of the public guardians and their caseloads are done every three years?
So as far as guardianships go, they submit an annual report each year that is reviewed by us at the court. So that's every year. The guardianship specialist actually goes in person and does a physical in-person review of the individual every three years. They, for conservatorships, they're required to submit an annual accounting of funds, you know, with bank statements. So we can see what was spent. That's every single year. And then we have a hearing on those accounts every three years. But we also have hearings for the first and the final accounts. So if the individual passes away or if they're changing who the conservator is, we'll have a hearing for that as well. So I don't want to say that there's, it's not every three years. I mean, there's definitely annual review. And for our public guardians, I mean, we do billing because they get paid once a month, every month, and we go through, you know, how many cases they have, what's going on every month.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And then another question is, you spoke about instances where there are guardianships could be modified or terminated, or they could, the people in the guardianship programs could be reconnected with their family. Do you have a sense of how often that happens? And what are the sort of instances that would allow that to take place?
I can run the numbers for you in our software and get those to you. I would say it's definitely not super common. I mean, these are, it's more for individuals who were very sick or may have been in an accident and gained recovery, or those individuals who we can reconnect with family members and now a family member is stepping in. It's more of those cases. And for the public guardianship side of things, it doesn't happen too often. I mean, it does happen. I think it would be, yeah, I can get you the numbers. I can run them, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Carol.
This is a program that I've always asked a lot of questions about, and you've chosen to highlight it this year. And I always have trouble with the idea, you have two judges, two administrators, forty guardians, and so many people for whom guardianship means basically taking over their life and all the choices that are made within their life. And I'm just really curious, I mean, I'm looking at this as a time thing too. How do you, you know, look at alternatives for people using other senior millage services? How do you really have a chance to look at the family options that might be available? You know, and the monitoring on a monthly basis? I'm having, maybe this is something that needs further discussion and it's not appropriate for right now. But I do think, you know, you're raising more questions in my mind than you're settling them with some of this once over because it's a control over that person's life.
Yes, and I agree. You know, Courtney and I are just two people. And I mean, I have hearings that I do every week, among many other things. And yeah, it's lots of caffeine, you know? It's a struggle. But yes, I mean, I guess I don't have an answer. If, I would love to have more people join the team to help out and to provide additional options and oversight. I mean, we do extensive training with our public guardians. They have a public guardian manual that's updated monthly, if not even more than that. We have monthly guardianship meetings where we meet with all of the public guardians in person to provide training options and just to discuss issues they're going over. I mean, they call me every day. They email me every day. So we have a lot of communication. It's not like we do not regularly interact with these people. It's, we do. But yes, it's, you know, there's only so many hours in a day.
Can we have further discussions?
Yeah.
Like, you know, if you get two hundred some applications a month, how many of those are actually granted?
Yeah, I mean, there are some that we have to turn away because we do have a limit on how many individuals our guardians can take on. Some of our individuals have ten cases. Some of our individuals have twenty. You know, it just depends on what we feel the individual can handle as far as how many individuals they can serve. But there is, there is a hard limit. And we do, sometimes we're at capacity and we have to turn individuals away. Yeah. But I'm happy to set up a meeting.
I was gonna say, it requires further discussion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else for Kaylee? Okay, I don't see any. Kaylee, I just want to say thank you for the work. Thank you to you and Judge Rose and Judge Murkowski for your service. And we appreciate what you're doing. Thanks a lot. Move on to our second special order of business. And I would like to invite Sheriff Michelle Lejoy Young and her team forward to give a report on the corrections portion of the sheriff's office. Good morning, Sheriff.
I'm actually gonna hand off to Chief Deputy Lindsay Cole this morning, who is our jail administrator. And she's gonna introduce a few of our staff members who've joined us. And then we'll both be available for questions after. Thank you for your time this morning.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning. As you guys can see, we've got quite the entourage in the back of the room again this morning. But I think it's important to let you all know who is here with me today. So I've got both of our jail captains here today, Captain Brad Lyons. Oh, is Jeff not here today? Oh, he is. Okay, sorry. There's so many. I might have missed one or two. And Jeff, they oversee the day-to-day operations in the jail. We've got Chief Deputy Jason Kelly. We've got law enforcement captains Rune and Bodie. And then we have a host of lieutenants, starting with Coutzier, Doc, Emily Coleman, Ashley Bolins. And did I miss anybody? No. And all the lieutenants here with us today have some sort of operational knowledge or background in the corrections division. All right, let me make sure I got this set up appropriately. So I'm gonna speed through quite a bit of this. Is there a way to get my notes up? Oh, I see it. Okay, disregard. All right, so this is a fairly long presentation. So there are some things that I'm gonna cut down a little bit. So if you guys have questions at the end, feel free to ask. Or like the presentation previous, if you guys want to talk about something offline, open to that as well. So this is just kind of the outline of what we're going to be talking about today. Values, vision, and mission. You guys have seen this a number of times over the years. But I do want to pull out just a couple of key phrases here that I feel like really highlight what the corrections division embodies. And that is serving with compassion and empathy, being guardians of our community, and providing fair, impartial, and humane treatment to those entrusted in our care. Those are elements that you're gonna hear reflected throughout this presentation. The sheriff's office and county priorities. You probably heard Brian talk about this in the law enforcement presentation. We align quite heavily with one another specifically around providing services to the community, caring for our staff, and responsible management of all of our resources. This is a basic outline of the correctional facility. It does change year to year, which is why I wanted to highlight a few things on here. So we currently have 1,477 beds. We are made up of fifteen different housing units. We booked in 16,500 inmates in 2024. Our average daily population is 944. The average length of stay is near eleven and a half days now. That is up from years past. If any of you have been through this presentation before, we used to hover around that nine to 10-day range, and we've seen that continue to rise over the years. We are the largest mental health care center, if you will, in the county right now. We currently have about 65% of our population that's taking some sort of psychotropic medication. 5% of our population is considered significantly mentally ill. So we are caring for some very critically ill patients. We have 278 total sworn staff, and I'm gonna get into those numbers a little bit later in the presentation. We have 24/7 medical care, for those of you that weren't aware of that. And why that's important is because, like I mentioned, we do have a lot of critically ill patients that we care for. Having medical care there 24/7 allows us to provide faster care and better care to inmates that are incarcerated. It also mitigates having to send out so many inmates to the hospital. But I will talk about that later in the presentation as well. We still send out quite a bit for emergency situations. We just don't deal with a super healthy population on a day-to-day basis. And then you guys have heard me say this before, running a jail is like running a small city. There are so many things that go on in the correctional facility and not enough time in this presentation to talk about them all. But a way to keep all of our checks and balances in order, a way to make sure that we are following best practices and meeting the expectations of the community is to have accreditations in place. So we are currently seeking accreditation through the American Corrections Association. We are gonna have our final audit on that in December of this year, anticipating accreditation in 2026. That's been a very long, rigorous process. Some of the staff sitting behind me have been part of that. It's been ongoing for the better part of a year. And in short, what that means is there's about 160 standards that we have to meet in order to obtain this accreditation. Booking trends. So you can see in 2019, that was about our highest booking rate we'd had at about 21,000 in that year, followed by COVID in 2020 where there was about 12,000. And we've seen a steady incline in that booking rate over the last few years. There's been a number of things that have happened that have led to both the decline and the increase. There were some legislative things that took place in that 2020, 2021 time that allowed for certain non-assaultive misdemeanor offenses to be cited. Following suit with a number of bill bond reform packages, that was part of that process. We still continue to see that rise, though. And what we're seeing with the rise is inmates are coming back in with more serious assaultive felony charges. They're violating more. So we're getting more people coming in on both bond, or I'm sorry, probation and parole violations. And then in general, there's been a huge push across the state for more law enforcement. So more law enforcement typically means more arrests. So we're seeing that correlation with that as well. Breakdown of jurisdictions. I thought you guys would think that this is a little bit interesting because this is the communities that you serve. This stays pretty consistent from year to year. Grand Rapids Police Department tends to be the highest percentage of arrests every year, followed by the Kent County Sheriff's Office. So I told you we'd get into staffing a little bit more. In 2023, the corrections division completed a staffing study. There were a number of recommendations specifically related to the need to increase staffing. We brought on 20 additional deputies in 2024, which makes up these numbers you see here. So we're now at two captains, eight lieutenants, 26 sergeants, and 242 deputies. And I know that that sounds like a lot. But when you break down the deputies alone, that spread across all of those 15 housing units, broke down by five shifts. And that also encompasses all of our specialty divisions, which do not actually work those 15 housing units. Things like our classification division and our jail intelligence unit. So when you break that down, that really only averages out to be about one and a half to two deputies per housing unit. So when you factor in shift relief, vacations, call-in time, you're really looking at a minimum staffing number still. Our turnover rate is about 10.7%, which is still well below the national average, even though it doesn't feel like it with all the things that we currently experience. You see up there, it's noted 37 expected retirements in the next five years. That's actually a significant decline from what we've seen over the last couple of years. The last couple of years, we've seen an average of 30 to 35 departures, with our higher groups for the year being around 40. So that's a very small incremental increase in time from year to year. Public safety is our number one priority. So we've seen quite the intersection with rule violations and serious assaultive felonies. For those of you that don't know, rule violations in the jail are, major rule violations in the jail anyways, are those that are considered to be some sort of infraction, some sort of incident that's happened in the jail that has led to an inmate either moving into a disciplinary situation or criminal charges being added, or sometimes both. Serious assaultive felonies are things like what's listed below: homicide, arson, criminal sexual conduct, assault with intent to murder. So very serious level crimes. And like I said, we've seen quite the intersection between the two of those. As one rises, the other one tends to as well. In 2024, there were 280 Category III, which are major rule violations like I just described. The top three rule violations for that, for the year of 2024, were assault another inmate, cause damage to facility property, and threatening staff. And although it didn't make the list for 2024, we've also seen a significant rise in staff assaults. Just in the last couple of months alone, there's been three. So we're on the rise with that as well, which is unfortunate. Let me go back and touch on this chart. So I put this homicide chart up here. I just thought it was an interesting fact. You can see the steady increase in that. But what I wanted to touch on the most is inmates that come in with this charge, there's no turnover. So typically, that number that you see there is that number that will be there for the year or longer as they're working through their court process. Forty-seven inmates in 2024 is an entire housing unit of just inmates incarcerated for that charge. Inmates that have this sort of charge or any serious assaultive felony take additional resources to manage. So whether that's staffing resources, how they're gonna be managed and housed. Inmates with that custody level, which are considered high custody level, take significantly more resources to manage than those that were minimum. And I don't know if I touch on this anywhere else in the presentation, so I'm just gonna mention it now. The majority of our inmates have transitioned over time from being low level, minimum custody inmates, to now being the majority of medium and high custody inmates. So as we see that shift, we continue to see the rise in all of these different risk factors, but also the need for all of that additional oversight, which correlates with all of our staffing resources and operational resources that we've been talking about over the last couple of years. So that kind of leads us to our first performance measure, maintaining a major rule violation occurrence rate of less than two per 1,000 jail bed days. Again, the same correlation that I've mentioned now a couple of times. As we see serious assaultive charges increase, as we see that custody level increase in the jail, as we see major rule violations increase, we see this reflected in that. And you can see over the last five years that that's continued to trend up, just like many of our other metrics related to custody level. The blue line on this graph reflects the charge trends for assault. So while not super, you know, you don't see a sharp increase, you do see a steady increase over time, which would also correlate with all of the different increases that we've seen over time and all of the different metrics that we continue to see increase over the last five years. What I thought you might find interesting on this one as well is that black line, which is auto theft, you see a very sharp increase in that. Under Sheriff Muir, when he did his presentation a few weeks back, he talked quite a bit about the Metro Pattern Crime Team and the amount of resources that they had put into that. So this was one of their focuses right around that time that you start seeing that serious decline in auto theft. So this is just a tangible example of being able to see how those resources getting dedicated to that actually do have a significant impact in our community. All of our performance measures and metrics, for the most part, all kind of tend to have some sort of intersection with one another. This is our second performance measure, mitigating use of force while assisting arresting officers with uncooperative new arrestees. So what that means is oftentimes, we'll have an arresting agency call the jail and say, hey, I'm coming in with someone who's uncooperative. I'm gonna need some additional assistance out in the Sallyport. Can you meet me out there? And uncooperative might mean they were uncooperative at the scene of the arrest. They might be verbally uncooperative with the arresting officer. They might be banging their head in the back of the car. They might be trying to kick out windows in the back of the car, or a combination of all of them. And what this statistic says is that 98.72% of the time in 2024, those Sallyport assists were de-escalated. de-escalated. There were 391 assists that occurred in 2024. So, there were only five incidents out of those 391 that resulted in any type of force. And all of, out of those five incidents, none of those incidents required immediate medical attention. So, that is really quite a testament to the training and the professionalism of the staff that we have working at the jail. And then, our last performance measure, again, goes hand-in-hand with all of those different risk factors that we've talked about. As we see that increase in custody level, as we see the increase in severity of crime, we tend to see an increase in destructive behavior, which we talked about earlier, which goes hand-in-hand with this performance measure, which is maintaining that sanitation score of eight or above. We see a decline in this as well during times where we've got major construction projects going on, which many of you are all aware, we have had many over the last five years. So, even though we've had all of those things going on, we still tend to hover fairly closely to our goal of eight. And then, again, training. I'm not going to read all of this, but every year, we have a required number of training hours. We are going above and beyond with all of our staff to make sure that we're meeting all of those needs. And specifically around de-escalation and crisis intervention, we make sure that that's touched on every single year. Community engagement and reentry services are also a priority. We currently offer 24 different programming options in the jail. They focus on basic life skills, education, and warm handoffs into the community. Eighty-five percent of our population is released back into the community. So, it's a goal of ours to release people back into the community better than they came to us. They are a captive audience while they're incarcerated. It is our duty to be able to provide education and resources that benefit them both while they're incarcerated, and be able to hand that off when they are releasing as well. This is a list of all of those different programs. Again, I'm not going to read through all of them, but you guys can take a peek. All of the programs listed up here are either voluntary-based or grant-funded. So, nothing comes out of general fund related to any of this programming. The Medicaid assisted treatment program, I'm going to go back to this a little bit. It's a combination of funding with that. So, there is grant funding associated with that, but with the MAP program, there is some general funds associated with that as well. I did want to highlight this program a little bit because it's gaining a lot of attention recently. I've been to the American Corrections Association presenting on it. I've been to the National Sheriff's Association presenting on it. I've presented on this program at the State Substance Use Disorder Conference. We have a partnership with Health Management Associates, who is contracted with the state, to help other county entities stand up their jail MAP programs. We've had a number of counties referred to us to come look at our program. It is considered one of the best in the state, if not the nation, depending on who you talk to. So, we are gaining a lot of positive attention around this program. So, what I want you to take away from this screen is the O1 alerts listed up here are inmates who identify as having an opioid use disorder but are receiving no treatment. The rest of the alerts are receiving, identify inmates who are receiving some sort of treatment. This, we have several metrics associated with the MAP program. This is one of them. Where I want you to focus is actually the middle of the graph, where it says 10 of 24. That is where we opened up our MAP Pod, where we have dedicated services provided in one housing location, and also where we dumped a bunch of resources after we received the opioid settlement fund monies. So, this was a metric that started during that time. So, October is where we really started tracking that. The gray line is the control population, so those that report having an opioid use disorder and are receiving no treatment. You can see that their recidivism ranges between that 62 to 72%. The blue line below that are green, depending on your eyesight, that is the population who is receiving treatment while in jail and their recidivism rate. So, you can see that there is a significant difference. And for comparison, our average recidivism rate for our total number of bookings is 38%. So, those who are not receiving treatment are significantly above that. So, they're going back out into the community and they're reoffending and coming back to jail. Those who are receiving treatment are significantly below that average. So, they're receiving treatment while they're incarcerated, and we are not seeing them return at the same rate. I'm going to highlight two specialty units. These two units have seen a significant increase in services over the last couple of years, and have positively managed through all of the changes experienced with those units. So, the first one I'm going to talk about is the jail intelligence unit. The jail intelligence unit works hand-in-hand with our sheriff's office detective bureau. They help not only with criminal behavior that's happening in the correctional facility, but also help identify intelligence that's for things that are happening in the community as well. They also do all of our monitoring of our inmate communications. So, they're monitoring our tablets, our phone calls, our video visits, when they're doing their investigative duties. We have two full-time deputies that are currently doing this work now. In 2024, we saw an increase of 254% of data sharing with other agencies across our area. So, significant amount of communication, significant amount of intelligence being shared in order to help solve crimes. And then, in 2024, there were 157 more positive identifications. And what that means is we get notices of, "Can you identify this inmate?" The jail intelligence unit is able to use all of their resources and aid in identifying quite a few of those individuals. And then, the second program I'm going to highlight here is the indigent defense staff at the jail. There were some legislative changes that took place regarding indigent defense, and how that was going to take place, and what the expectations of that were going to look like. So, in 2019, we implemented our plan. And the plan changed in that prior to this legislation, inmates were arraigned in groups, being read their advice of rights by an attorney over video in that group setting. So, what this legislation did essentially was require that each individual prior to arraignment is allowed personal and private consultation with an attorney prior to that arraignment taking place. Initially, when the program was stood up in 2019, attorneys were actually coming into the building, and they were doing all of that work operationally inside the jail without as much resources as what we use now. In 2019, when COVID hit, all of those resources transitioned to virtual services. So, that was quite a change in how we had been administering that program previous. So, what that means is now, we have a dedicated team of staff that facilitates all of those different meeting rooms, facilitate all of that equipment, have to be responsive to the judges as they're sitting through all of those different hearings, and/or be able to answer questions as they're working with their attorneys. So, that takes, where it took the load off of the courts a little bit, it actually put more of a load on the jail to be able to administer all of those things. And the State Court Administrator's Office has come out with a number of different guidelines and orders stating that it is more efficient to perform these services by video through virtual hearings. And that is their continued recommendation, which is why we continue to do it that way. And this just shows the increase in virtual court hearings between 2023 and 2024. You can see there was over a 1,000-number jump. That's consistent for years past as well. So, we do have a request out through the state grant for an additional staff member to help with these continued massive increases that we've seen. And the forensic evaluations is just kind of a sampling. We have a lot of other services that are performed virtually, aside from just the court hearing. So, forensic evaluations would be one of them. Again, these services were done by a doctor coming into the facility previous. Now, we do all of those services virtually. And I will say, they are safer, not having to transfer inmates out of the facility is safer, but it does take more resources inside the facility to be able to accomplish it. Court security and transfer crew. Court security and transfer crew are the staff that you guys see at the courthouses when you're walking in. They're helping maintain courtroom security, but part of their job duties is also all of our scheduled medical appointments or appointments outside of the facility during the week. And you can see up here, there were 228 of those. What's more interesting is actually the 759 unscheduled. So, court security and transfer does not handle those appointments. Those are hospital runs or emergency medical needs that come out of the jail. When those happen in the jail, those are not planned for. Typically, the resources are not there established for those, so they typically result in overtime. And that has an impact on both our corrections division and our law enforcement division, because sometimes there could be five or six in a week that might require help from the enforcement division to sit on someone at the hospital and be able to transport somebody out if we don't have enough staff in the jail. And then, these statistics are fairly unremarkable, with the exception of the juvenile transports. Court security transfers, part of their duties is also the juvenile transports from juvenile to the courts. We saw quite the reduction in that, and there's a couple of reasons for that. The state had some changes in the way that juveniles were booked and accepted into the juvenile correctional facility, so there was an impact there. There was also a number of conversation with the prosecutor's office regarding the booking and holding process of juveniles when they're brought to the juvenile facility, depending on the charges they're being brought in for, which has eliminated that cycling as much. So, there was a very quick turnaround initially. There isn't as quick of a turnaround now for that, so we're not seeing the cycling of repeat offenders coming back. Capital improvement projects, and I promise I am almost done with this presentation. Capital improvement projects, the feasibility study and master plan at the top of the list here. Many of the commissioners have been through the facility now, where we've talked about the different improvements that need to be made. But for those of you that aren't familiar, the construction projects that have been proposed focus or center highly around the 1972 portion of the correctional facility that still exists. And what's made up in that building is a little bit of inmate housing, but also our medical wing, our facilities, our inmate laundry. It also encompasses all of our administrative offices and locker room space. As you can imagine, the staff we had in 1972 is not the same as the staff we have now. So, we've significantly expanded beyond that space. It also encompasses a little bit of construction for our indigent defense services, like I just talked about, which is centralizing those services instead of having those spread out over all the different 15 housing units, in order to make it more efficient, and then some training space. And significant accomplishments. I'm not going to touch on all of these. We've talked about a lot of this throughout the presentation and in years past. But what I did want to touch on a little bit here is the partnerships with educational institutions. The corrections office, the corrections division continues to be very transparent and open with how we perform our duties, how we perform operationally, and like to involve the community with seeing and experiencing that. So, we have a number of partnerships with educational institutions, mostly medically related, where we allow interns, fellows, and several others to come in to either do data collection studies, or work towards additional education in that correction setting, so they can better understand how correctional health care works. All right, and that's it. So, before I end this, I do just want to say thank you to all the commissioners, the county administration, the community who continue to support us, and all of my wonderful staff in the back here. Everything, all the resources we get, all of the things they do, all of the leadership that we have on our team truly do make us one of the best, not just correctional agencies in the state, but also one of the best sheriff's offices. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And honestly, that was pretty good. I think you came in under a half an hour.
Okay.
Impressive for all the ground that you covered. Questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Pontstein?
Thank you, Chair Green.
Chief Deputy Cole, thanks for being here today. A lot of numbers, a lot of things to look at. You know, we could point fingers on why people are in jail, why they're not, what we're doing and what we're not. But at the end of the day, they're in jail, and that's our responsibility, from care, shelter, food, and all the above. And the one thing, I don't want to get into the politics of why people are in jail, but once we have them, we have a Health and Human Services Deputy, Robert F. Kennedy, that loves talking about the food we eat, and the nutrition, and the effects it can have on human beings, whether it's while they're, you know, an infant, school lunch programs, end-of-life food programs. It's a big thing. Now, I'm assuming the last I heard that we hire this service out. How often or do we go over the conversation with them is, what kind of food are we feeding them? I don't want to use the word "is it edible," because that's a, you know, wide range. But, you know, the old-school thought with hardcore jails is that, you know, peanut butter sandwich and an apple, or a chip beef sandwich and an apple, you know, that's all they, you know, they deserve. But if we are releasing 85% of them back into the community, I think a healthy educational plan on the benefits of eating well, and have that example shown every single day, may be something that just not helps them when they get out, and may help them if they're in a, kind of some type of medical treatment program, or just being a good inmate. Your thoughts, or is that...
Yeah, so, we actually did just renew our food service contract, so all of that was just looked at again. But we meet regularly with our food service vendors to go over that. We also have requirements through several accreditations that we have that outline a minimum number of calories that have to be intaken, as well as different needs that have to be met, whether it's for medical conditions, religious beliefs. So, we do have to meet a number of standards already around that. We also have, one of our programs that was listed up there is called the EndoWork Program. That's put on by Airmark. That's a program where inmates learn about nutritional value, they learn about food safety. So, it's something that is ingrained in our food service vendor to make sure that we're providing the things that you just asked about.
Commissioner Morales?
Thank you, Chair Green. At the top of the presentation, you mentioned that you had more mental health patients than anywhere else in the county. I'm just wondering a couple of things. Like, does that demographic generally have more long-term stays? Like, do you just become basically a mental health hospital at that point? And I'm also curious about what percentage that would be of the annual population?
So, out of the annual population, I can't answer that off the top of my head. But yes, those patients do tend to have a longer length of stay than our, than our general 11.5 days that we see currently.
What would you say is like the average length of stay for those patients?
I could not guess. Typically, those patients have a more difficult time getting through the court process, a more difficult time dealing with their attorneys. It tends to lengthen the process. Sometimes, those inmates might be getting restored at a forensic hospital, which also takes additional time. So, in general, because of those things, we tend to see that length of stay lengthened out longer.
Would you say it's like under or over a year for the most part, though? Like, I'm just wondering if they just, like, reside with you forever?
Yeah. So, last I knew, forensics were taking upwards of nine months to complete. So, then, there'd be a restorative process after that to get them through the court. So, I would say a year might be an average, but it would be me swagging at it. I'm not certain of that number for sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pakla?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here, Chief Deputy. It's always great to hear from you all. I am always appreciative of the great work that happens on the innovation side of the sheriff's department. And while we've got different perspectives on getting folks into the jails, once you all are there, you're doing the best that you can, you know, and even then, above and beyond what you actually could with other resources. I think that comes from a general search for innovation that you all have as part of your sort of departmental policy. And I'm wondering, as we, as we look at this list of community partnerships and the programs that you all are bringing to our inmates, are you seeing trends as you're having conversations of programs that are more successful that you'd like to bring? And the sort of secondary question is, I think we could also all agree that we would like to see fewer people be incarcerated if we can improve the systems that lead to their incarceration. And we know, for instance, that investment in early childhood education is correlated positively with a reduction. positively with a reduction, well, correlated negatively with crime rates, right? So more investment in early childhood leads to decreased crime rates. Are you hearing other community investments or community ideas from conversations you're having broadly in the innovation space that we can maybe think of upbringing to our community?
So I can't think of anything that's been brought to me very recently that's different than what we're currently doing. We do evaluate our programs with our program executives regularly, and I would say we identify more gaps than we identify more need. With the 24 programs that we currently have, we're covering a vast array of services. One of the things that I would say is still considered a gap would be not every program has that transitional space for that warm handoff. So continuing to innovate ideas on how to accomplish that, I would say is where we're at in that space.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to comment on how appreciative I am of your medicated-assisted treatment. And it is just such a success story that you showed us today, and it's great to see opioid settlement money going towards something that's so effective. So I know that Chuck DeWitt, right, was just a real, you know, pioneer and advocate for this program, and I'm just so glad to see it continue. And a question related to that, you said you have 24/7 medical staff. Is that related to, is that just, you know, medicine? Is it also mental health? Is it the whole ball of wax?
So if you remember from last year's presentation, we added additional mental health services through our medical contract. Part of what they do is intaking of all of our inmates. So any inmate that comes in through the facility is seen by a nurse where they're triaged for both medical and mental health services initially off the bat. Our Network 180 staff who provide the general basic mental health services are there from 7:00 in the morning until 11 o'clock at night. So we do have that overnight gap with them. What was the rest of that question?
I'm not sure. The 20, yeah, the 24 staff, so you do have someone there full-time, but that's not necessarily specifically mental health, that's more...
Yeah, so, sorry, back to that. Some of the services that are provided is not just the intaking, but it is, it's all the medication passes that have to occur during both the daytime and nighttime as well. Any triaging of incidents that are unexpected throughout the course of the day, whether that's day and night, are also captured in that service as well.
Okay. And are we seeing any decrease in terms of mental health or SUD intakes with the CSU, or is it kind of too early to know?
I think it's too early to know on that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Faber.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here. Yeah, I'm caught a little bit that, you know, 20 years ago, this presentation would have been much different about the jail, so I really do appreciate all the partnerships and the way that we're approaching this. So in the upcoming action item around the budget, I think we're likely going to approve five additional corrections officers. Could you talk a little bit about where those folks are going to be going? What, are there going to be challenges in filling those positions? Is there currently vacancies in corrections?
We do have a higher group coming on. We anticipate another higher group in January to kind of even out where we're at in staffing. The staff allocation of those five deputies, we've got, so if you go back to the staffing study, so I'm sorry if I repeat this whole thing, and I try not to make it too long. If you go back to the staffing study, one of the main things that were identified in the staffing study was allowing our staff to receive break time. So the initial phase of that 20 staff was to accomplish that. The additional staff from here out has been due to a continuous assessment of what the needs are, what security positions, if you will, need to be filled in order to accomplish our mission and our operations. So those positions are going to be strategically placed into areas that we feel like need more operational attention. So not necessarily security, if you will, but operational attention in order to accomplish all of the different things I talked about, whether that's indigent defense, jail intelligence, the medication pass, all of the things that go on in the jail. There are certain housing areas, specifically the housing area with the high custody inmates, where we house a lot of people that are there for homicide. Those take additional resources. So you'll see some of that staff filtering into positions like that.
And then just a quick follow-up. Are there, related, unrelated, but are there specific folks coming to the jail, maybe people that have violated probation? Or are there some low-hanging fruit out there that you see that if we change something, we could stop some group of folks from coming into the jail? Because once they're in the system, the expense and the process and everything just is exponential. Where do you see the opportunity as a community to, is there a bandwidth, is there a group that we should be thinking about to stop from coming in or coming back to the jail?
Yeah, I'm looking at Commissioner Legrand because we sit on a committee where we talk about these things a lot in this committee and try to identify what that is. I think ultimately, I can't speak for every organization out there, right? So some of the legislation that I talked about earlier, it gave the ability for agencies to cite versus bring in those non-assultive misdemeanor charges. Well, there's still exceptions to those, too. And that is how the litigation is intended to be, because there's always going to be some of those exceptions. So it would be easy for me to stand up here and say, well, we just should eliminate those exceptions, and we could eliminate all those low-level offenders from coming in. But I don't, you know, I don't oversee all those agencies. I'm not there for every situation. So I don't want to make a blanket comment that those would be low-hanging fruit, but I do think those are some of the things that that legislation is aimed at improving. Yep.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. Good morning, and thank you for the presentation. I am struck again by the report that the percentage of inmates who are diagnosed with a behavioral health issue, it's well over 50%. Most of these are pre-trial detainees, that is, they have not been convicted yet of the crime for which they are being lodged. And we know that when they come in, they don't walk in with their medical records, or very rarely do that. And Medicaid doesn't cover them while they're incarcerated. So that is a formula for a real problem. And I know that you've made great progress on that. Are you comfortable that the continuity of care, which is so essential for those that are on these sort of psychotropic medications, is where it needs to be? And if not, what do you think we need to do?
So much of what we initially learn about an inmate is self-reported by them. Inmates that have been through the community mental health service in any way, shape, or form typically have a record where our embedded staff who work for Network 180 are able to access. So where we might see a gap is where we have inmates that have a significant mental health need but have never sought treatment in the community. There's always going to be a gap there because there is no records for us to obtain. So those are what we consider those high acuity patients, which was one of the reasons that we brought on our medical vendor to provide that higher-level service in order to help more quickly identify and treat those inmates.
So you bring something up I think is important. To the extent that that population is a Medicaid population, and I suspect a good part of them would be, they will have records through Network 180 or the CMH, and that will be accessible to you because the same care provider. If they're not Medicaid and they're not being treated through the CMH system, you don't have access to those records. And that's where I think that we have a problem, because you can't just immediately conclude you should be on this medication, you should not be on this medication. And I assume they don't get an opportunity to just keep taking drugs while they're in the jail. So that's the challenge for you, isn't it?
Yeah. And again, we do have psychiatric services. We do have a psychiatric doctor that's employed through our medical vendor. So he, that is part of his job, is to assess those patients that we don't necessarily have a record but have an indication that they do have some sort of mental health need.
And that's the cost that we have to cover at the county.
Yep.
Well, thank you for your work. And I know that it's a challenge. I'd suggest that we still need to focus on making sure that we get that done effectively, such that even when they go back into the community, there's still continuity, that you're not putting them in the community worse off than when they started.
Yes. On that note, I'll just follow up with one thing. We do have discharge planners as well, so we are working as closely as we can with our community partners to make sure that those that do have identified psychiatric needs are getting that warm handoff into the community when we can facilitate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Womack.
Thank you, Chair Green. I have a few questions, so you could be as brief as you want on some of these, and some the sheriff might have to jump in. Do we have any psychologists that are on the payroll when we talk about the 278 staff members?
So they wouldn't be the 278 staff members, but they would be encompassed in our vital core or our medical contract.
Okay, with our partners?
Yes.
Okay. When it comes to the medical assisted treatment versus the non-treatment, it was great just to see that recidivism rate down to 20% with that. That's just incredible. Could you tell me a little bit about what's involved with the medical assisted treatment? We talked about it, but in general, what kind of service are they giving them that's helping? Because I like to see the same thing out here in the public.
Yes. So that is typically an hour and a half presentation that I've been giving. So I will try to, I will put this into a five-minute...
I heard you say, Matt, but I understood it, but I still couldn't walk away and say, what does an inmate go through when he gets that?
Yeah.
You know, like, back in the day, we knew there were methadone treatments and things like that. So I'm just trying to get a little more specific.
Okay, let me try to narrow it down to not take up too much time. So every inmate is screened by medical when they come in. One of the things that they're going to be screened for is whether or not they have any substance use disorders. If they identify as having an opioid use disorder, they're immediately connected with our medical provider and our mental health provider, who encompasses that medicated-assisted treatment team. They assess them immediately right out the bat for what medications they're either coming in on and taking, or what medications they might qualify for taking. That's based off of an opioid withdrawal scale, so they have to fall within a scale, which is, it's a numbered scale. I don't know what all of the number, I don't know what the scale goes up to, but they have to meet a certain number in order to qualify for that treatment. Once they go through the medical and mental health screening processes and they're connected with the MAT team, they will start medication as quickly as possible. We offer all forms of opioid use disorder medications in the jail. So that's not just methadone, it's buprenorphine, it's all the injectables that are out there now. So they have options, because not just one medication is what's going to work for everyone. So they have to be able to, one, have that continuity of care that was discussed. So if they're coming in on taking a specific medication, we want to continue that. And then from there, if they're not taking medication but qualified to be on medication, we're going to have our MAT, medical professionals, assess them and walk them through that process on what might be the best medication for them. From there, it's a continuous process of therapy and recovery coaching that they get while they're in the pod or in the jail in general. We're also providing that warm handoff to the community that happens through the RED Project. And then upon discharge, they're doing discharge planning, they're receiving Narcan, they're receiving fentanyl test strips upon release, and they're getting education out the door.
Thank you. That's very, that's very good to hear. The breakdown is very important, because there's a lot of people want to partner also with us here at the county, out in the community, for some of this opioid. And I've been cautioning and making sure that we're partnering with people that can definitely get the job done. And so I think that's just a great role model, once you see those percentages drop.
And I'd be happy to present that information in more detail to you guys. I just presented it to the opioid task force in Phase 1 of what probably needs to be Phase 2 at some point in time. So you're more than welcome to either attend that meeting to hear it, or we can do it separately as well.
Thank you. And when it comes to suicide, we had a suicide last year, so I think that may come to litigation, so I don't want to talk about that specifically. But in general, what things do we do to be proactive, knowing that this is a very depressing point in many people's lives when they're incarcerated, even for a short term? So what are the things we look at when it comes to suicide prevention? Because nothing was discussed about that.
So in general, I would say again, that's something that's talked about with every inmate when they come in at booking. So they're getting an initial, every inmate that comes in is getting an initial assessment upon intake. We also have pretty significant training for all of our deputies. So even when they're removed from that mental health world or away from that screening process, we have staff that are constantly keeping in tune with what's going on.
What about our monitoring, once we've identified that this may be somebody through that screening that may be suicidal?
So there's policies and procedures in place that both the staff and our mental health care team follow. There is a number of alerts, if you will, that identify different levels or layers of concern with an inmate. So they might be seen at different intervals of time, they might be placed in different housing, depending on what their needs are. But in a nutshell, that's basically it.
Okay. Thank you. My last question is surrounding the educational level. We're talking about the people we have incarcerated, 994, almost 1,000 a day. What would be the educational breakdown to see if there's some link to a recidivism for those with a lack of education or even the population? Do you have, do you have any of that information?
So we do actually track average educational level of offenders coming into the facility. I don't know that we track the correlation between recidivism and that specific metric, but we have both of those things available to us, so it is something that we could track.
Okay, I'll catch up with you on that just because I think, you know, being on the corrections committee, having a chance to talk with judges and people, just, it may be something they can start implementing, even at the juvenile level, about people finishing their education and people getting GEDs who are continuing to see the judge. Do we have any, when you talked about education, I finish right here with that one.
Yeah, I thought the last one was your last one, Commissioner. I know the team is happy to meet anytime.
Yeah, that's about part of, this is almost part of that same one with education. Who are our partners that are helping with some of the education when they're, they're only there for 11 days? So are we contacting them and hoping they follow up? Who are some of those partners? And I'm done.
So Lighthouse Academy, Kent ISD, and Grand Rapids Public School are all involved in the different elements of education, whether that's GED services, special education services. We are required by the state to provide all of that.
Thank you so much. Sorry for all the questions, but the biggest part of our budget, a lot of it, the majority is with the sheriff department, and we don't get to see you so much. So thank you for answering those questions.
Commissioner Oliver Kin.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for your presentation. It's very informative. This may be an off-the-wall question, but I didn't, do you partner with resources to help those re-entering the community in terms of employment? The reality is, it's great that you're dealing with mental health and health, drug addiction, but everyday life includes working and contributing to, you know, to our society. And so often, these individuals, you know, recidivism, you talked about that. And that's because, you know, there are limited resources, helping these individuals reintegrate back into. So are there any, I didn't see any partners listed that do that kind of, that you could refer them to, or is that just something that's just not a part of re-entering?
Yeah, so without having the programs right in front of me and the definitions of what each program does, yes, we do have programming that does involve connection to employment upon release. I would have to actually get those definitions out to know, but I can say with certainty, yes, we do.
That should have been a part of your presentation.
Next year, I'll do it.
Okay, anyone else? I had a couple of quick ones before we elaborate on this too much. We've, you've given us a lot of time this morning, Chief, thank you. Just really quickly, I'll just a comment that the statistic on the homicide charge bookings is terrible. It's not anything as a criticism of you guys, but my back of the napkin math set up 62% five years, which is a big number. In general, are those, the bookings are, you would count an individual twice in that if they were a returned customer, right?
If they were a returned customer, yes.
If I committed two different crimes, I came back, that's two, right?
Yes, you have to actually be booked in, released, and then...
Not specific just to the homicide, but...
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And then the last one, quickly. I know you guys better than to know those performance measures. You didn't just pull those out of the sky. How do you develop those? Where do they come from?
Yes.
Thanks, Chair.
And I can give the history on how those were picked a number of years ago, and it's really important to us that we don't hide numbers that don't look the way we want them to look. So we had a lot of conversations over the years about, do you leave them in the presentation? And I think it's an important tracking mechanism for the environment that we're dealing with. So that's why we chose to leave them in. They were, based on the population... Uh, they were, based on the population, and and I'm going to say fifteen years ago, I I probably would have to look at the exact year, but based on the population we had fifteen years ago, those measures were stretch goals that uh we were able to meet in those years. Um, you know, we had the the cleanliness score, again, we're we're teetering around that number, but our facility has aged fifteen years since that number was picked. So there are things like uh paint peeling off certain areas that have to be repainted, that would infect that. Uh, you know, a terraza floor that's degrading over time that we repair when it gets to a certain level, but you know, fourteen years, it it needs to be repaired next year. It's going to show some of the signs of the the chemicals that we use on it, that kind of thing. So some of those things, it's an aging facility, some of those things is the changing population. And um, we did discuss coming up with new measures to also report on, but I think it's important that we continue to report on the things that we have that you can track over time. So the number of offenses has very much to do with how well we're able to manage inmates in the facility, given the s- the significance of their custody level. Um, that changed when the custody levels changed. Uh, maybe our goals should change, but I think it's important to know that in many years, we were able to meet that fifteen years ago because our population was that significantly different. Um, but the one I will just draw a circle around, we first started to measure, uh, they call them Sally assist, it's when that officer brings somebody in and needs help with managing that inmate. Uh, we were in about the eighty percent of those that were de-escalated without the use of force. And I could not be more proud that as our job became harder and harder with more dangerous individuals that were coming in, our reputation and circumstances allowed us to reduce those uses of force to, you know, only two percent of the time, which is very significant. And so there are some things that that tracking shows more improvement and some that I think you're going to continue to see declines in.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I want to say thanks, uh, Sheriff, uh, and Chief for the time and for the presentation. Um, also, thanks to Under Sheriff Muir. I know, uh, Chief Kelly, our captains, our lieutenants in the back, thank you for uh the work that you guys do. We really appreciate it. And uh, I'm sure you get a follow-up from a couple of commissioners here, but we appreciate all the work and thanks for what you're doing. All right. We will move on to agenda item number six, which is public comment related only to the agenda action items. Wish to make public comment related to an agenda action item, please give your name and address and share which agenda action item you are speaking to.
How y'all doing? I am D. Jones, passionate entrepreneur, visionary. I'm speaking on Resolution A, which is Fiscal Year General Appropriations Act. So I spoke to Commissioner Till about this first to be sure that I got the info, and this is basically uh, an act for you guys to basically um figure out what's going into the general budget and different things and things that you'll spend on. Uh, I gave you guys a handout. Uh, this is from Ryan Kilpatrick. I've been speaking to him about three D printing homes. Uh, I know that you guys have the revolving housing loan fund and uh general appropriations. I spoke to you guys about actually three D printing house. I've been speaking and advocating about three D printing houses since twenty eighteen. Uh, I'm happy to say that I've seen Ryan Kilpatrick here at y'all Community and Safety Committee, and I got him to speak to the guy who three D printed homes. Right now, they actually had a conversation and they're looking to three D print homes early twenty twenty-six uh here in Kent County, so we will be having a uh actual visual of a three D printed house being printed here in Kent County. So I'm asking you guys, as you guys have your General Appropriations Act, that you guys not just have a revolving housing loan fund or anything else, but you guys also have some funds set aside or grants, uh, funds that you get from the state or federal government to invest in affordable housing or three D printing houses. We have a housing crisis here, thirty-four thou- it's not thirty-four thousand units because we've been printing house, I mean, not printing houses, but we're going to be printing houses, but we need additional housing here. So I'm asking you guys as the Kent County Board, as we need to be innovative, as we need uh housing solutions that once these three D printed house uh black person that's actually been pioneering and innovating this and been asking you guys this that is coming here to uh appropriate funds to support three D printing houses to attack the housing crisis. As I've been saying continuously, I'm not going to uh let up, I'm going to continuously be passionate, and I'm going to continuously ask that in your fiscal year, because I know Ben likes to try to stop me sometimes, your fiscal year twenty General Appropriations Act that the county board puts funding, if you guys can appropriate funding to three D print housing and support three D printed houses. I know we have a revolving housing loan fund that you guys started with the ARPA funds, and I was here through that entire process. But now we're going to have three D printed houses being printed here, and I'm asking the Kent County Government, our Kent County Board, the entire board and the chair, when we three D print these houses, that it once it's actually done and it's actually shown that we can do this, that you guys support this and put funding into this so we can attack the housing crisis, because it's easier, it's sustainable, it's better for the earth, it's eco-friendly, and you could print houses faster than traditional houses at literally almost sixty-five percent of the cost of traditionally building a house. So please, please, please invest in the innovation, because it's coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment related to agenda action items?
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. I'm Rosalyn Harris at twenty-one forty Hearthstone, Caledonia, Michigan. Um, as you can see, on my T-shirt, dementia doesn't come with a manual, it comes with a daughter who never gives up. I'm that daughter. I have stood before you on several occasions. In my former public comment, I made a brief reference to the senior millage. In my reference, I briefly touched on the funding to the Kent County Guardianship Program. If you all recall, my mother is currently awarded this program in which I'm still actively pursuing to gain a resolution that is in her best interest, and that is for guardianship to be awarded to her very willing, suitable adult child, which is myself. In review of the Probate Court's twenty twenty-four annual report presentation, the five positive impacts of the guardianship program I can attest are not occurring in my mother's case. Actually, it's been quite the opposite for me and others I have met under the same circumstances here in Kent County. In reading over the presentation, I recognized the request for funding of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars from the senior millage for the guardianship program. Do we know how these funds are allocated within the guardianship program? As a Kent County property taxpayer, is this information made available to the public? I do see the recommendation from the commission of two hundred thousand twenty-seven dollars, which is a reduction, but how do we get a, how do we fund a program that lacks sufficient oversight? Michigan Probate Judges Association, which includes the Kent County Judges, was in opposition to prior guardianship reform bills that were presented along with being in opposition to the current bills HB four seven, four six seven six and HB four six seven seven, which are supportive decision-making bills. These bills are geared towards implementing least restrictive measures which involve a family mower, which will reduce the number of court-appointed guardians and ultimately reduce the need for the significant funding from Kent County. I challenge the commission board to further research the guardianship program and support implementing measures that will reduce the need for additional court-appointed guardians for those who have willing and suitable family. Please keep in mind the impacted vulnerable seniors who are being negatively impacted by a system that should be designed to protect them, uphold their rights, and promote autonomy. We need to see a change here in Kent County, and it starts with each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Javonte Tubbs. I'm the nephew of uh Bobby Moore Biles, and that's who I'm advocating for uh this morning. Uh, so um, my aunt Bobby Moore Biles was uh one of the cases that was in that for over fourteen thousand uh active cases in two thousand twenty-four of the probate, Kent County Probate Court. Uh, one of the first things you see when you look onto the annual report is protecting vulnerable individuals. Then it reads guardians have insured safe living arrangements, stable finances, and access to necessary medical care. They never did that to, for my aunt. What Kent County Probate did was move my aunt out of her home and into a nursing home that she can't leave from, and she did it, they did it all against her will. That made her very vulnerable. Uh, this must be the safe living arrangement that Kent County Probate is referring to. It's multiple sources in capital, multiple sources including capital care, health, and AARP says that ninety percent of adults over the age of fifty years all prefer to age in place, which means they want to age at home. The first thing uh Kent County Probate did was move my aunt out of her house, made her very vulnerable. Um, they also put her in a nursing home that she can't leave from. They isolated her from her family. The Judge Murkowski threatened me and my sister that for, with jail time, if we went to, if we went to visit my auntie. Then then they'll, then they also say that they're reconnecting families. How are you reconnecting families when you're threatening families with jail? Uh, if they're going to visit and advocate for my, for my aunt? So that's what I'm here for today. Uh, also, uh, my sister Gina Tubbs, who worked for the IRS for years, she was an auditor for the IRS. The IRS found her, the US government found her capable of making, uh, of handling uh, uh, cases for the general public, tax cases for the general public, but somehow Murkowski found her unfit to manage my aunt's uh estate, which she had been doing for years before the probate came and took advantage of my aunt through guardianship. Um, LMCU went on record saying that my sister had not misappropriated one penny of my aunt's money. They went on record saying this. Essentially, Murkowski called them liars just to, just to maintain the narrative of making my sister unfit so he could come in with his professional guardian stranger to put over my, my aunt's estate and 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 pretty much uh, uh, manage her estate and wi- without the family having anything to do with it. And once again, we were not put up on anything that was going on with my aunt. Her water got cut off, her her Xfinity got cut off. This is what the guardian is supposed to be doing. They're supposed to be paying the bills. Obviously, they weren't paying the bills. Nothing ever got shut off when my sister was managing uh my my auntie's affairs. Um, now, one thing that the Kent County Probate Court will never tell you is this, and 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 this is very important, I need y'all to listen. How many of your guardian and conservatorship cases in the last three years has probate allowed family members to retain the guardianship over their loved ones?
Thank you.
I bet it's zero.
Thank you.
If y'all find that out, you can blow this case wide open. Murkowski and Hall of Probate needs to be um prosecuted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Brandy Ritzma. I'm a resident at fifty-five hundred Osborne Avenue in Kentwood. I am here today not only as a daughter, but also as an advocate for dozens of families here in Kent County who have endured the same injustices that I have. I was arrested and trespassed from visiting my mother because I posted pictures on Facebook. The nursing home and guardian tried to silence me. They even told the police I couldn't post pictures, so the police had to redirect them and let them know I wasn't breaking any laws. My life was owned alongside my mother's, and we were violated and tortured under the guise of protection and the need of guardianship. Since when do facilities, courts, and guardians own our loved ones? Since when is human touch and family love and basic dignity treated with such disregard? And this is not only just my story. Through my advocacy, I have supported many families across the county who were trespassed from their loved ones. Standing behind me, an elderly mother, seventy-seven years old. She isn't allowed to go visit her son when she wants. A public-appointed guardian controls who sees her son and who sees the care plan meetings. The judges don't listen. The guardian alitem, um, appointed by public expense are working for the facilities and the courts because th- they get money. We don't. Meanwhile, abuse is ignored, neglect is substantiated. I'm a mandated reporter. I reported the abuse and neglect going on with my mom, and it wa- it was founded and substantiated at the state level and the federal level. And because they had to get me out because I was costing them money, they had to criminalize me. And did you know that guardian alitem reports, APS reports, CPS reports, all become business records? And then the truth, even though you can prove it's not true, it becomes truth in the court record, and all these families are being criminalized. This is at its core, a form of modern servitude and slavery. Families are stripped of rights, silenced, and treated as if guardians and institutions own them. Slavery is not gone if families can be erased and punished simply for loving them. This is a very serious concern that demands your immediate attention. Families deserve the right to remain present in the lives of their loved ones. Vulnerable people deserve protection and touch, not isolation. Guardianship and facility authorities should never be used as weapons of control or retaliation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Siri Livikas. Twenty years ago, I took my son to a rehabilitation facility to have him rehabbed after uh an ax- an auto accident, and he received a brain injury. Three months later, the Rehabilitation Institute that I took him to stopped all rehabilitation, and they filed for guardianship of my son and received it. He has never received any rehabilitation after that. They wrongfully usurped the care of my son. The court um colluded in that usurping of my son. My attorney quit on me the day of the hearing, and yet the court continued on with the hearing, even though I had no attorney, and guardianship was awarded to the guardian asked for by the facility. He had also, the facility had also filed for guardianship of my son a month earlier. Unbeknownst to me, I was not at the meeting. The attorney that I had hired accepted the uh guardian as a temporary guardian using his power of attorney to represent me. I was not a part of any of those proceedings. I have tried for twenty years to have a day in court to recover guardianship of my son. I have not had one attorney, although I've had forty uh different attorneys, not one attorney has taken me back to court so that I can present my case that I want guardianship of my son. When they took over guardianship of my son, I was in the process of having him transferred to an intensive residential uh rehab in Detroit uh because he wasn't receiving. The guardian, the temporary guardian that was appointed, ex-nayed that. They said, no, he can't go. She wouldn't give him their records, and and he has never had any rehab since then. This is a corrupt system, and my son has lived from seventeen until thirty-eight, which he is now, as a resident of this captive system. He can't come home. He can't go to events. He he can't get a swallow test. He can't have rehab. And I am only allowed to visit him one hour a day, three days a week on their time period, and if I miss it, I don't get to see my son. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Terry Gates. I live at seventy-one thirty-five McCords in Elto. I'm here today to urge the county to anticipate sustainability concerns in this year's budget. Leadership today means visible action. Adopting a sustainability plan, launching a solar commission, investing in resilience, less ensure that Kent County thrives in the face of inevitable, inevitable challenges that we are facing. Besides serving as the Executive Director of Healthy Planet Strategies, I recently just found out um last week that I achieved certification as an environmental educator through the Michigan Alliance for Environmental and Outdoor Educations. I also served on the Energy Systems Work Group and as an ambassador for the West Michigan Healthy Climate Plan, which will soon be released by the Grand Valley Metro Council. In fact, Kent County Environmental Action Team EEP that I'm a part of is hosting the Grand Valley Metro Council to present and gather feedback on the West Michigan Healthy Climate Plan at Fountain Street Church at five thirty on September eleventh. We invite you to attend to find out more about the West Michigan Healthy Climate Plan and to promote it on the county's website. The plan calls for a fifty-two percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from electricity generation by the year twenty thirty. That's five years from now, a goal that matches the state of Michigan's greenhouse gas reduction goal. So that gives the county five years to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions So that gives the county five years to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions by fifty percent. We must start now. We can't wait for four years or three years to implement that. The county budget needs to reflect the importance of clean air, clean water, for the quality of life for our residents. There's already strong momentum. Grand Rapids just adopted the cap. East Grand Rapids, Rockford, Lowell, Wyoming, Kentwood, Kentwood under soon-to-be mayor, Monica Sparks, uh, is also engaged. These local plans reflect years of research and public engagement, yet Kent County remains silent. I urge you to commit to developing the Kent County Sustainability Plan, one that addresses inevitable flooding, extreme weather and heat, and expands waste reduction, renewable energy and efficiency, advances community solar and microgrids for resilience. You've already seen how environmental challenges affect the budget, like the Dean Lake discussion that was held past June, and I was here for that long meeting. Costs are going to keep rising if we remain reactive instead of proactive. So this is too urgent. The airport can put solar on it. They had a feasibility study they've just done, and there was two possibilities. Uh, there's a thirty percent tax credit that's going to go away. The county can save over three million dollars if we get solar at lots of multiple sites. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment related to agenda items? Good morning.
Good morning. Um, my name is Shannon Tanis, and I'm a displaced person within Kent County due to retaliation and for civil rights advocacy with multitude of topics, but mainly with housing. I did not realize that there was so much on the agenda, but I will get right to the point. I am also impacted person. My mother was a ward of the Kent County Probate for ten years. I, uh, have two confirmed reports from Laura that state neglect and abuse, um, in all capacities, not only to my mother, but other residents of where she was. She died in, uh, December 24th, 2018. I was retaliated against. I was kept away from her for the last week of her life and threatened with a restraining order because of the fact of filing a petition within the probate court to, um, protect a vulnerable individual. Uh, my attorney, uh, Mr. Timothy Vandenberg was retaliated against by the virus association. He'll never practice law again. Okay? It's kind of funny. I was asked to, uh, look into a Grand Rapids Public School property because, uh, Annette Vandenberg wasn't, uh, able to get any information from the Grand Rapids Public School. Well, she divulged to me about an individual that she knew in the community. His name is Mark Adam. He was a ward of the probate court. He died this past spring. And she had reported to the police department because he was getting social security, and we had a candid conversation about the oversight I've done with probate cases and that I'm aware that the social agencies and, and organizations within the community are helping to commit this neglect and abuse on our elderly people that are going through the probate system or, uh, the homeless system or the drug system. Upon researching his public guardian, her name is Veronica Smith, uh, Laura already has significant reports of, uh, validation of neglect and abuse of all, uh, multitude of her other wards. So I'm very curious to the probate court, uh, why aren't they able to investigate in this capacity and pull these reports and see and acknowledge the neglect and abuse that is coming upon us, on the people and that they're neglecting to address? Uh, I served the Attorney General Danny Nestle with her listening tour in Kent County in the courthouse, uh, gave her notice. Uh, at the same time, that was before the Supreme Court justices and, uh, former Chief Justice, uh, uh, Probate Judge Murkowski, and he ran out the room on my testimony about my mother's case. So I don't need a court to validate what has happened. I oversited, um, Brandy Ritzma's mother's case. I can confirm everything that happened regarding that case. Excuse me, please give me one more minute.
The limit is three minutes.
I know. Please give me one more minute.
You have to abide by the rules that we have here. We have three minutes for public comment.
On the aspect of the sheriff's office, I would ask you to look at judicial diversion and stop keep recycling people just for funding.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on agenda items only this morning? I'd like to point out that, um, I gave a lot of leeway this morning. Technically, we don't allow public comment on, um, non-action items during the, um, agenda items. Those are not, the presentations that we receive, the special orders of business are not action items for the board. So, um, if you've given public comment regarding guardianship in the probate court, we appreciate it, um, but I will rule that if you give that comment again later on, it will be considered repetitious. So I appreciate that. Thank you for being here, um, and thank you for your comments. We'll move on to agenda item number seven, uh, which is the consent agenda. I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I move that today's consent agenda is adopted.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Any questions, comments, or discussion? I see none. With that, this is a roll call. Vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Here.
Peckla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Morse.
Morales.
Merchant.
McLeod.
LaGrand.
Coleman.
Hildenbrand.
Hennessy.
Halsted.
Faber.
DeBoer.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move on to item number eight, which is resolutions for eight A. I will call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move Resolution Number Fifty-Six, the Fiscal Year 2026 General Appropriations Act from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Steck. Questions, comments, or discussion on the, um, budget? Yes, Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. I hope to, um, represent the more conservative, um, voice of the members of this commission regarding this particular item. We have, uh, a budget before us. As we know, budgets are very difficult at the federal level, still debating the budget at the state level, and here we are at the county level. And, uh, for the most part, I believe, you know, we do a very good job at giving commissioners the opportunity to have a voice in this process. We have, uh, many workshops, um, where commissioners can express their concerns. We also have a public hearing where the public can come and speak on the process. And, um, for the most part, I'd say I'm ninety percent supportive of the budget that has been put before us. But I think it's a daunting task, putting a budget forward, that all twenty-one members of this commission can support. And there are various, um, aspects of that budget, of the budget that's before us that may be objectionable to some members. Again, like I said, I'm supportive of ninety percent of that budget, especially, uh, the budget for safety. Very supportive of our Kent County Sheriff's Department and their needs. And I use the word needs because in many cases, some of the things that come before us in the budget are wants, and we have to be very careful about how we, um, balance the, um, approach to wants and needs. So, um, I think we need to take a more conservative approach when we look at the expansion of government. And I'm not supportive at the federal level of the federal government expanding. I'm not supportive of the state at the state level expanding, and I'm also not supportive of the government here in Kent County and our, um, expansion. And as we've seen over the past several years, the government has been expanding. And so we get a budget that comes before us from the administrators showing their wants and needs. I think we need to be more conservative about our approach to the needs because some of those can be subjective. And so I think I would like to see more money being put aside and invested in our capital improvement fund so that we can do things like build a new county administrative building and do that with money that we have in the bank rather than taking and using, um, funding from bonds. So, uh, certainly we have the ability and with our triple A bond rating to do that, but I think having capital funding for those things is more, uh, you know, a better approach to, um, dealing with our, our needs here as, as a government. And, um, also finally, um, I think I'd like to say that the constituents have been coming to me and saying, what are we going to do about taxes in Kent County? It seems that our government seems to expand to the amount of taxes that it collects, and we're collecting a lot more taxes because, um, Kent County is growing. And I'd like to see that we consider reducing the millage rate that the taxpayers are paying because that's what they're asking us to do. So, uh, in short, I'm hoping to represent the conservative voice on this council.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions, comments, or discussion? Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. I, uh, want to thank everyone for the work. Um, I do have a few concerns with, um, some similar sentiments of I would like to see a leaner, uh, county government and not, uh, more full county government. So I will, um, be voting no, although I definitely support a lot of our statutory services, especially public safety. Just for that reason, though, um, just because I wanted to see a leaner budget, I will be voting against it.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, discussion? Commissioner Faber.
Uh, so I think there's five of us that, uh, this is our first time through the budget process, and I want to thank staff, uh, for answering our, every question we might have as we go through this. Uh, it is a daunting task to look at that two-hundred-page-plus budget and make sense of it. Um, and so I, I want to thank, um, those commissioners that also advocated for additional work sessions and opportunities to dig deeper. Uh, my challenge is, uh, we still have the opportunity to include more public in this discussion. There really, aside from the public hearing, isn't, I think, a really robust, uh, public engagement strategy around the budget and helping people understand it. Simply sending this document of the proposed budget out, um, really does nothing for a citizen that has to go through a significant learning curve. And so I think the presentation that was given at the start of the public hearing two weeks ago would be a great primer, um, and I almost wish we could have gotten that, uh, a year ago, uh, or nine months ago. So I really, we have this opportunity now between, uh, potentially passing this budget and honestly, when we begin the process again, which is pretty much tomorrow. Um, and so what can we do this fall to, uh, get out there, show people this budget, and collect some of that feedback that could inform how we might look at the budget next year? Um, so, uh, thank you again. Thank you to the folks that did come to the public hearing and provide comment. Um, I did hear two overriding themes from that, uh, engagement. One was, uh, looking at how we are going to support arts and culture in our community and thinking differently potentially about how we use some of our revenue through the hotel motel tax to do that. Uh, the other thing I heard was, uh, really making a stronger commitment to sustainability or at least being able to show the public where this budget is investing in resilience, um, as a community as we continue to face, uh, more extreme weather events and hopefully become more independent as a county. Uh, so thank you very much. Uh, I very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, comments, discussion? Richard Womack.
Yes, I just want to thank our staff again for their work on the budget and all my colleagues here on the budget. And I do agree with Commissioner Faber. We could, you know, use a little more, uh, public input, but I also, um, believe as commissioners, we've had some time to, to look at the budget. I probably wasn't going to speak too much about the budget because we have had some time to talk about the budget, but I, as much as I support public safety and I, I'm, I, I support public safety because public safety supports us. If we're not putting money into public safety, we're, we're not going to be safe. And even the people, um, as, uh, Commissioner Steck mentioned before, when people are in jail, they haven't been convicted. So even people who are coming in jail, they're not going to be safe if we're not putting money into public safety. But at the same time, we need a robust budget that's covering everything so one day we won't have to put so much money into public safety. As it was said, we need our jails. Yes, we do need our jails, but we also need more education. We need more jobs. We need more resources out into this community. And just looking at the budget, sometimes when you're looking at the numbers, it's one thing, but when you really look at some of our department heads and the services that Kent County gets and you see people who are in need and, um, getting those services, um, three-hundred-and-sixty degrees around, and as long as I've been on the commission looking at this budget, um, I, I just want to say Kent County does a good job when we look at the sustainability of what we have to do to make sure that when we run out of room for our refuse, uh, the committees, the commissions, it's, it's, it's just so much that there's no way to really show our budget without showing a video. So I do, I do, I do see some things we could improve on, but I just want to say our staff has done a good job. And, um, you know, I'm a stickler. Um, I'm always looking for something to complain about, but, uh, it, it is, is more good than bad. I just wanted to put that out here for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'll be quick. I just wanted to, um, say that I think that this year's budget, um, process was, um, a very, um, I think we're heading in the right direction. I liked the fact that we had multiple, um, work sessions thanks to the, um, Chair Green and, um, Finance Committee Chair Teal. I think that, you know, there's always room for improvement, but the process itself, I think, lended itself to the commissioners being able to be fully aware and understanding what was in the budget. Um, I also just wanted to, to note that, um, although I, um, understand the need to, um, align in some ways with the, um, focus on safety, I do believe that our budget is, is adequate for that. In fact, I think it's, uh, I, I feel like it's a lot, right? There's forty, about forty-one percent, forty-three percent of our budget is related to safety, you know, from the courts to the, to the sheriff's office and all those sorts of things, and less than one percent is related to health and human services and, and mental health. And so I think that that's a stark comparison, and I would like to see at some point in the future that we might talk about what those priorities are in terms of where our funds go. But the process itself, I feel like it was a good process, and I feel like it, um, is moving in the right direction, and I'd like to see that, um, continue to move in the right direction as we move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Chair Green. Um, I'll be supporting the budget, um, this morning, um, but I, I did want to echo some of the sentiments of, uh, Commissioner Boujack and Commissioner DeBoer. Um, I represent rural and a little suburban parts of the county, um, east part of the county. I would say it's a, we're a donor taxpayer, uh, county commission district. Our, I think the constituents I represent pay way more in taxes than the benefits they receive. Um, and so I do want to echo the sentiment that I am too concerned about, um, the, uh, our millage rate and the amount of taxes that are being paid, um, from the people I represent, and also the size and growth of, um, our county government. I think we have to be conscious and sensitive of that as we move forward in future budget years. Um, but I do appreciate the, um, prioritization of public safety. That is something that I hear from, um, the folks I represent, um, regularly, that they want to see, um, our investment in public safety so they feel safe in their homes and communities where they live. So I appreciate all the work on the budget, and, um, I'll be supporting it with kind of some of those comments to keep in mind for the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. So I appreciate too the work that staff did. Chair Green, your leadership on this budget process. You know, I don't single out a single department. I think the work that the county clerk does is good. I think the work that the Parks Department does, prosecutor's office, and mental health obviously has been short-changed since I was elected seventeen years ago. But we're at this point now, and we still have commissioners that are questioning things that are happening here. things that are happening here, and it seems that since I got elected to the county commission, there's always been a process, and it's been the same process, and it just keeps moving on. We make tweaks to make it better, maybe get more input from the public, but at the end of the day, it's a budget that's structured that we take the budget we had from last year, what do we need to keep those budgets moving? And that leads to growth in government. Never along the way do we ask the question, is there a better way we can do it? Are there things we're doing that maybe we don't need to be doing? It always keeps growing, the budget. And that's been true through technically probably all 46 years of my public service. So I think the challenge is, and I've never been a real fan of strategic planning because it basically just, we talk and we group, and we then apply that to what we already have, and how can we make that better? If we are really meaningful on doing the budget, we've got 21 members, they're paid a salary to represent people, we've got to change the way we formulate this budget because right now, from my viewpoint, is the staff puts the numbers together, this and that, and there's never really the conversation of what our constituents want, what our beliefs are, that government should be, and how are we going to fund that? Those are all important topics, but I don't think enough time is given to that. So I would suggest that, you know, the first step is we got to rework what a strategic plan really is because in my book, the strategic plan is just adding to what we already are doing. And we've got to look at new and better ways of doing things because the printing presses at the federal government are going to eventually run out of ink. The state, you know, passed through $9 billion of a surplus just to spend, and that's got to come to an end. And if we don't take a look at it, I think the voters from across the country are starting to, and that alternative to what the voters will probably end up doing might not be too comfortable for the people in this room. So today, I am supportive of the budget. I don't handpick one department over the other. Am I happy with everything? No. Am I happy about some things? Yes. But that's all part of the process. I don't think the budget's the problem today. I think the process that we are doing and that process that starts tomorrow, as Commissioner Faber has highlighted, needs to be changed. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. So I have not been through as many budget approvals as Commissioner Ponstein, but a lot. I think that maybe this is my 12th. And each of the budgets has thousands of line items, and I have not seen a budget that I agreed with every line item, not yet, not in 11 or 12 years. Probably somewhere between 50 or 100 line items, I would say I would tweak them, but the fact is, it's not my budget that's up for approval. It's frankly not even my voter's budget that's up for approval. It's not my district's budget that's up for approval. It's the county's budget that's up for approval. And that's a budget that takes into consideration a very broad sense of perspectives and interests and needs, maybe best defined as that common good. It's the common goods budget that we're trying to evaluate at this point. And that means I fuzzy up a little bit, in my view. If the standard was, I don't like some of the items, then I'll vote no, then I had never had a budget I should vote for, and I probably never will, but I don't think that's the I think the standard is, for me, is whether or not, in the overall assessment of this budget, does it fairly and reasonably address what I think is the common good of this county? And I think it does. Not perfectly, but I think it is a fair budget. I'm going to take a little issue with my colleague who shares my name, Commissioner Ponstein, in suggesting we're not asking whether or not there's a better way. I frankly think we do a pretty good job of asking that question, excuse me, over and over and over again, whether or not there isn't a better way for us to do what we do at government. And I think we've made some significant changes and progress in finding that. Not all of them. We have to continue to ask those questions. We need to continue to push the envelope to find better ways of doing it, and better, I mean more effective, more efficient ways of doing what government does. I do agree with my colleagues that I think the process is important, and I think we are moving in the right direction in how we process the budget approval mechanism. I like transparency. I like engagement. I like engagement particularly early in the process where it can make a difference more than at the last minute, but I think we're moving in the right direction there as well. So I will do the same thing I've done every year. I've voted on a budget. I will accept there are some things I don't like. There are some things I'll put in my list to buttonhole Al on later about why can't we do this and why can't we move in this direction? I'll do my best to reengage at the next process, starting tomorrow, on what we think ought to be directions, but I think we've made a good, good effort here in identifying what is the common good and what is our budget going to do for us in that regard. Does it grow a little bit? I don't know. Maybe it does. Of course, we're the fastest-growing county. To stay the same, we have to grow. I think that's what the formula says. Do I like growth for growth's sake? No. But the fact is that we're serving substantially more people than we did 10 years ago, and that carries with it inevitable growth. So I will be supporting this budget and look forward to seeing it implemented.
Thank you. I have Commissioner Womack in mind for a second. Does anybody have a first before I call on Commissioner Womack? Commissioner Morales.
As Commissioner Faber mentioned, this is my first time kind of going through this process, and I also want to express some thanks and appreciation for the staff that put a lot of work in putting this together. And also, just to kind of continue the thread that Commissioner Steck was sharing, I think, you know, we're never going to have a perfect budget. Like, the world's always changing. We're always working on a future budget. We obviously can't predict the future. You know, with things like COVID, with things like the financial uncertainty we're seeing in this federal administration, I don't know that we can expect perfection, but I think, like Commissioner Steck said, I think what we have here is fair and addresses just like the needs of this constantly changing, constantly growing county, so I'll be voting yes on it as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? For a first, you can come back if you'd like. Okay, I'll call on Commissioner Womack.
I just want to thank Commissioner McCleod for her comments and showing some of the line items that may need more funding that we can look into and for her support of the budget. Want to thank Commissioner Ponstein, as he said, not picking one over the other because when I look at our departments, we're not funding it in the way we are. What happens is you underfund here, and the metrics at something you love so much begin to fall apart. And I thank public safety for even understanding that with their budget, they're beginning to put more out into education, more out into mental health because it helps their metrics. So I think that's very important, but the real reason I came back for a second was to kind of bring Al into this, to talk about the Healy Act, because a lot of times when people see our budget go up, they don't understand. We don't go in the back room and say, hey, we're going to raise the taxes. We're limited by law on some things we can, can't do. A lot of times, just sitting here going from meeting to meeting, I see grants that come in when the state or Fed see a need that's happening all across America, and then we can either say, no, we're not going to take the grant money, but, you know, we take it for those needs and we distribute it into Kent County for the services for those citizens. So there's a lot of other reasons that our budget is going up. It's not all taxes. Just, Al, I guess what we should hear from you is, we get ready to vote on this budget and what you think on why our budget is rising and if there's a need for it, and what you think about the fact that how the Healy Act associates with that and pretending to think that the majority of this comes from us raising taxes. Maybe I'm wrong, but I'd just like to hear your opinion.
First-time budget growth, I think it was 2018 when the county finally recovered from the impacts of the Great Recession, and tax revenues started going in the positive direction again, past what it was in 2008 when the Great Recession hit. And so whether we're growing fast or too fast, or whatever you may believe, has a lot to do with the starting point of what you're comparing to. So if you compare budget growth as we tried to recover, as revenue recovered after the Great Recession, it's going to look greater than if the Great Recession never happened and we simply had typical increases from 2009 all the way through 2025. And so, yes, there was some catch-up that needed to be had after there were significant cutbacks due to, I believe, the first time in history, the general or the property tax went backwards instead of forwards. And so that's one big piece of it. And so the timeline that we're thinking of is very important when we make statements like the budget's increasing or whatever. The other thing to always remember is that most of our services are mandated, and we are the fastest-growing county by bodies. And so there are going to be increases, and there's pockets of areas where, for example, we've heard about in the jail, one of the maybe downsides of legislation that happened five years ago that decriminalized certain offenses is that some people aren't in the system soon enough to be caught and may be reformed, and so they end up committing worse and worse offenses. And so in our jail, we have much worse offenses to deal with, which are more expensive to do so, or certain areas of juvenile crime. And so certainly, there are not beyond the fact that we're the fastest-growing county. We also have pockets of services where the need is mandated and growing far beyond a normal trend such as population growth. Certainly, the county is subject to the same kind of supply issues that happened after the pandemic and also inflation and all those sorts of things. I think the basic question that we need to look at is what is the cost of government? And if a majority of the board believes the cost of government is too high, then I think maybe the board needs to come to agreement on what should be eliminated as far as the service goes. It's hard to look at an individual department in a $650 million budget and say, this department doesn't need that staff member, so we'll just cut that one staff member from the budget request. I think it's better to look at it more globally and say, is the cost of government too high? And if so, what is within our authority to actually reduce? And then, I think, take it from that standpoint. We've shared charts during the various budget workshops that have shown that, you know, the county millage rate has significantly reduced because of the Healy Act, which limits the growth of property tax by class without a vote of the people. We've also shown a chart that shows the very significant reduction in the amount of value that's not taxed if folks have a homestead, if their home has homestead protection, and that's also a massive amount of money that taxpayers have saved. We've also shown a chart that shows that we collect a substantial amount of taxes. I mean, we're also 10% of the total tax levy of Kent County when you look at other taxing jurisdictions such as schools, local governments, ISD, community college, like all the different jurisdictions that tax. And so I think as I look at the budget, it's a solid budget. We have very solid reserves. We have, I think we're the envy of many. First, as has been mentioned, we're one of only about 100 counties in the nation out of 3,000 that have a AAA credit rating. We're one of only four in the state, and that is like the badge of whether you're healthy or not. And so you look at what we have in capital, you look at our strategic capital, you look at our fund balance, which exceeds the policy that the board has set, and we're a very healthy county. That doesn't mean that the board shouldn't look at or consider whether we need to go in a different direction on some services provided or as the cost of government or whatever, but certainly, we have a very healthy situation that we're working from. So I just wanted to make that clear to anybody who may be in the audience here or online. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Chair Green. Yeah. Vice Chair Burl.
Thank you, Chair Green. In ops, I guess I'm going to take a little different approach to staffing, and I understand that since the Great Recession, there are some positions that have not been filled, and it was said that perhaps it's just not positions. But in ops, we did have a robust conversation, and there was a motion support, and then eventually got defeated about taking some certain positions out of this coming budget. Ended up being a 4-3 vote that those positions got moved, and I'm going to say that that is important. It is important that we look at those positions, just not for this year. It's for coming years as well. At the end of that meeting, I did ask for, I said, even though this passed today, this will get moved towards a budget. I said, can you give me reasons why we should be supporting these positions? Give me some good, strong reasons. I had one. One of those departments sent me information on why they should keep those positions. So if they're so important, why didn't they give me more detailed information on that? As the chair, I asked for that and did not get that. I wasn't going to go chasing it. I wasn't going to go asking them for additional information. So for that particular reason, again, I will be a note today on the budget that I had people that did not try to defend these positions. I know it's a small portion of it, but again, enough to really kind of pick me off. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, comments, discussion on the budget?
I just have a few notes prior to the vote here. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Finance Committee Chair Teal for the work that she put in on this budget. Appreciate that. I'd like to thank the staff for the willingness to hold some additional conversations with the board and attempt to, you know, kind of bring us up to speed and share some of the reasoning with us. I appreciate that. I think for me, as the chair of this group for my first budget, there's some lessons to be learned throughout the process, some ways that we might be able to improve. I think we've made it a little bit better, but that's, I think all of us have sort of felt like we take two forward and one back, but that's still one forward net. So I, you know, that's kind of summarizes where I am on it today, but I think we're doing some really good things in this budget. We've increased our fund balance by quite a bit over the last few years, which is excellent. We are making insignificant investment in public safety and quality of life pieces, so those are great things. That said, you know, I do think there's room for improvement in years ahead. I'm sure that everybody has different ideas of what that might look like, so. But I appreciate the work that went in to it and look forward to, you know, improving upon that incrementally each year. So I don't see any other questions or comments, so I will ask Madam Clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 56, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Merchant.
No.
McCleod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman. Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
DeBoer.
No.
Vice Chair Burl.
No.
Commissioner Boujack.
No.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 16 yeas, four nays. The motion passes. Resolution 56 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've been at this for two and a half hours. Selfishly, the chair needs to use the restroom. Let's reconvene at 5:00 after. We'll go at recess at the call. Quickly. So we'll go to, we're on resolution, item number eight resolutions, and for item B, I will call on Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to introduce Resolution 57 of today's date, which is the Ready-By-Five Fiscal Year 2026 Funding allocations, which comes to us from the administrator's office.
Thank you. Use our support. Supported by Minority Vice Chair McCleod. Any questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Yes, Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved in the process. I think it's a fantastic I think it's a fantastically run process. I also wanted to point out something that we heard during the Ops Committee, which was that this was the first year where we actually had more requests come in than we had funding available to allocate. And I think it's really an important reflection on the day that we adopt our budget, that we take a look at where we are spending our dollars and recognizing that there is significantly unmet need in our county that we can address. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Steck.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Green. Yeah, I will be supporting this. I think it's a good process. I would simply encourage the process, wherever the points of engagement are, to continue to look at which of the spectrum of all of these programs are generating the best palpable, definable outcomes. And that's always hard to do in government, but I, and I'm probably replicating my former colleague Commissioner Tallon's often-repeated theme is, look at the outcomes. What is the outcome? Find out was that process that's making the biggest difference? Because we will be moving more and more into an environment where you're getting more demands for the money than we have. And so you're going to have to find how do we focus that money where we're getting the biggest bang for the buck that we're trying to accomplish here. So that's a good off my.
Thank you. Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. So I appreciate this resolution and will definitely be supporting it. I just wanted to know what the intersection of this particular action, as well, how it intersects with the Childcare Task Force that is currently meeting. And I saw that there was some unallocated funds, which was awesome, so I would be hoping that there might be a way to intersect that with the work that that committee is doing. I don't know who can answer that, but I feel like that needs to be.
I think Jenny probably can.
Yeah.
That's a good question. The needs around childcare did come up when the Board of Commissioners was looking at language for the ballot to continue the early childhood program. So the language on the ballot did provide for Ready by Five Millage to be used to share information with the community about childcare resources, so that is underway now. The Childcare Task Force had their last formal meeting this month. We're preparing the report for the board now, and we will include in that report any recommendations about using millage or other resources to consider for supporting childcare needs in the community, but that's still in the works right now.
Anyone else? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Faber?
Yeah, again, just want to thank First Steps Kent and the committee for putting these, this report together, or the budget together for this. You know, again, we are unique. Kent County is the only county in the state that has such a unique millage supporting our youngest residents, and I anticipate we will see these outcomes. They may not be for 20 years, which is the hard part, is how do we measure a system that is traditionally very difficult to measure? And I know if you haven't tuned into the presentation that was given to Ops, the data system that is being put in place now is robust, and I do look forward to seeing those near-term, midterm, and long-term outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I see no one else. With that, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 27, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal. Steck.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Coleman. Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 27 is adopted.
Thank you. We will move to item 8C, and I will call on Commissioner Womack.
I'd like to move Resolution 58 of today's date, the senior millage funding allocations for fiscal year 2026 from our Administrator's office.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions, comments, or discussion? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. So I didn't want to comment on all three, but, you know, once again, we're, the last three resolutions are millages, and the burden for the tax dollars for those millages come from homeowners. And that burden is getting higher and higher and higher. Yes, there are needs. There's needs in the seniors, neighbors, there's senior meals, all of them. I mean, we could spend more and more and more, but something's going to be hitting a tipping point, and that's what we've got to be aware of as a county, is, you know, how these things are funded, and the state's going to realize it, or, you know, I think the day is coming when we're going to be in for a big shock when something hits across that ballot line. So I'm fully supportive of it. They've served my mother well in her last years of her life, so I appreciate it. But there's needs all over, and, you know, we've got to find new ways to meet those needs and quit relying on the backs of homeowners.
Thank you. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This particular senior millage item, as well as the Ready by Five Millage, I think are great examples of what it means to have collective action for the common good. You know, we had a fantastic presentation in our Ops Committee by both groups, Ready by Five and the Area Agency of Aging of West Michigan. And for anybody that didn't tune into those, I highly suggest it because the numbers are amazing. The return on investment that we have for public investment in these services is fantastic, and a $500 investment from the senior millage to take care of someone in their home prevents $30,000 of an emergency room visit on average. And those are the kinds of numbers that really signify, again, this notion of collective action for the common good, because when we start to think about the scale at which we are able to operate under a Ready by Five Millage or the senior millage, and the preventative, rather than reactive, measures that we're taking, it really is appropriate and proper use of our community's dollars. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. The senior millage is a very mature program, but doesn't take anything for advantage. It has a county commissioner, citizen board that reviews everything on an annual basis. We have contract administrators who make sure that all of the terms of our contracts are adhered to and that the services are provided within priorities for what will really serve people, to keep them in their homes. And of course, food and transportation to medical appointments is very primary to it all. But things like shovel within the city, or anyplace, shoveling the sidewalk can also be critical and maybe the only service someone needs to stay in their home. But it is prioritized, it is reviewed, the agencies are held accountable, and this is really, it's a service that the people vote on, so they're choosing to put their money on this particular service. And I think it's very well-chosen, and it's a very well-delivered program.
Thank you. Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair Green. I also just want to voice some support for this program. I think that it's a great investment. You know, we talk a lot about helping folks age in place and things as one of those villages that helps people do just that. And it's also something that, you know, we're all going to be seniors at some point, right? Like, for me, it's like, that's 30-plus years away. For some of you, that's a little bit closer. But, you know, ultimately, we're all going to be really reliant on these services and like, you know, and just putting that good out into the world now, I think, helps ensure that we will have that to receive as well in the future. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. No one here is a senior just yet, right? Commissioner Womack.
Yes. Just looking at the senior millage and looking at our budget today, this is definitely something that also, as Ms. Morales says, everybody's going to be seniors, hopefully. I pray for that for all my colleagues and everybody that's here today and everybody listening. Not all of us are going to go to jail. I don't even know why I said that. I'll tell you that. I hope you don't. Somebody is. I hope it's not me. Hey, but anyway. Hopefully, we're all going to be seniors. I'll just say, I just say, I don't want to curse myself. Hey, Boujack moved over a little bit. Okay, yeah. But it's senior citizens, it's like sometimes when we see the title and some people may think, hey, I'm not concerned about senior citizens. Hopefully, everybody is, because that's what I want to see everybody become. But also the 1,600 veterans that has served. And with me sitting on KCAA, Kent County Community Action, getting a chance to see the things they're doing with seniors there, so seeing the senior millages and our area for area aging, just seeing the partners they're working with, just a multiple, two to the partners to make sure our seniors are taken care of, and that's why I'm supporting the millage. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. So as a commissioner, fully qualified to receive these services. Thank you for all the work. I note that the representatives from AAA and the allocation committee are here and have inserted that. I know that some of the commissioners that have worked on that, this is a ton of work, and I want to reinforce that for those concerned about whether there's oversight on these programs, it is robustly evaluated and considered by that committee and by AAA, and whether or not, and to what extent these programs are effective, and whether or not they're doing what they're supposed to do. So I have all the confidence in the world that these dollars are being appropriately applied and that oversight is provided. So I support that. Thank you, guys, for your work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I see none. With that, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 58, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal. Steck.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Hildenbrand. Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 60 is adopted.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. Yeah, I will be supporting this. I think it's a good process. I would simply encourage the process, wherever the points of engagement are, to continue to look at which of the spectrum of all of these programs are generating the best palpable, definable outcomes. And that's always hard to do in government, but I, and I'm probably replicating my former colleague Commissioner Tallon's often-repeated theme is, look at the outcomes. What is the outcome? Find out was that process that's making the biggest difference? Because we will be moving more and more into an environment where you're getting more demands for the money than we have. And so you're going to have to find how do we focus that money where we're getting the biggest bang for the buck that we're trying to accomplish here. So that's a good off my.
Thank you. Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. So I appreciate this resolution and will definitely be supporting it. I just wanted to know what the intersection of this particular action, as well, how it intersects with the Childcare Task Force that is currently meeting? And I saw that there was some unallocated funds, which was awesome, so I would be hoping that there might be a way to intersect that with the work that that committee is doing. I don't know who can answer that, but I feel like that needs to be.
I think Jenny probably can.
Yeah.
That's a good question. The needs around childcare did come up when the Board of Commissioners was looking at language for the ballot to continue the early childhood programs. So the language on the ballot did provide for Ready by Five Millage to be used to share information with the community about childcare resources, so that is underway now. The Childcare Task Force had their last formal meeting this month. We're preparing the report for the board now, and we will include in that report any recommendations about using millage or other resources to consider for supporting childcare needs in the community, but that's still in the works right now.
Anyone else? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Faber?
Yeah, again, just want to thank First Steps Kent and the committee for putting these, this report together, or the budget together for this. You know, again, we are unique. Kent County is the only county in the state that has such a unique millage supporting our youngest residents, and I anticipate we will see these outcomes. They may not be for 20 years, which is the hard part, is how do we measure a system that is traditionally very difficult to measure? And I know if you haven't tuned into the presentation that was given to Ops, the data system that is being put in place now is robust, and I do look forward to seeing those near-term, midterm, and long-term outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I see no one else. With that, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 60 of today's date, fiscal year 2026, prevention initiative funding allocation, which comes to us from the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Yes, Vice Chair Burl.
Thank you, Chair Green. We do have our DPW director in the audience today as well. Just, this is a piece of property I believe DPW's been working on for a while, but after we had a little work session this past year, just some more encouragement was given to pursue the purchase of this property next to our waste energy facility. It's a pretty sought-after piece of ground there, you know, heavy industrial area along that corridor, kind of works with a lot of potential future growth there. Whether the waste energy facility stays there long-term, or whether it gets decommissioned down the line, this piece of property will be valuable to us or anyone else that would ever be interested in purchasing our current five, soon-to-be eight-plus acres. All the definite steps are in there for all the environmental concerns. I feel really good about that. So, yeah, really excited about adding this big piece of the puzzle to a county asset. We do have, oh, what else in there, Dar? There's so much with it. It's in our budget as well. It was a question asked in our meeting, and this did go to our DPW board, passed on a 5-1, and I think it was unanimous in Ops. So again, I appreciate the work on that and tying that piece of property up. It's valuable to us and the DPW. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. This is again a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 60, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal. Steck.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
our current five, soon-to-be-eight-plus acres. All the definite steps are in there for all the environmental concerns. I feel really good about that. So, yeah, really excited about adding this big piece of the puzzle to a county asset. We do have, oh, what else in there, Dar? There's so much with it. It's in our budget as well. It was a question asked in our meeting, and this did go to our DPW Board, passed on a 5-1, and I think it was unanimous in ops. So, again, I appreciate the work on that and tying that piece of property up. It's valuable to us and the DPW. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this is again a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 60, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal. Stuck. Sparks. Ponstein. Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King. Morse. Morales. Merchant. McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand. Coleman. Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy. Halsted. Faber. DeBoer. Vice Chair Burrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Boujack. Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yays, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution 60 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Item 8F. I will again call on Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a mouthful here, so bear with me, please. It's my pleasure to move Resolution 61 of today's date, the Department of Public Works' sustainable business park easement acquisition and right-of-way easement convenience to the Kent County Road Commission, which comes to us from the Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Is there support? Support. Supported by Commissioner Womack. I did look at the agenda, and I think that's the longest one I've ever seen, and we have acronyms in there. Questions, comments, or discussions on this item? Yes, Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to note that with this, it says sustainable business park easement acquisition, but the use that we would be using it for may be the sustainable business park. It may not be. I just wanted to clarify that as far as what the future use is. It's going to be needed no matter what the property is or becomes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I see none. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 61, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal. Stuck. Sparks. Ponstein. Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King. Morse. Morales. Merchant. McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand. Coleman. Hildenbrand. Hennessy. Halsted. Faber. DeBoer. Vice Chair Burrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Boujack. Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 61 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move to Item 8G, and I will again call on Commissioner Faber.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 62 of today's date, Department of Public Works' Scale House Attendant, brought to us by the Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? I see none. This is again a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 62, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal. Stuck. Sparks. Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King. Morse. Morales. Merchant. McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman. Hildenbrand. Hennessy. Halsted. Faber. DeBoer. Vice Chair Burrell. Commissioner Boujack. Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 62 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Item 8H, and I will call on Commissioner LeGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I am thrilled to move Resolution 63 of today's date, fiscal year 2026, prevention initiative funding allocation, which comes to us from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. Just had a quick question. So there was 10 programs that were funded, and there's nine agencies. Which agency is doing more than one program?
Jenny, are you able to answer that for us?
Does the, my laptop decided that this meeting has gone on long enough, so I don't have my information in front of me. But the number of agencies funded and the number of programs should be the same number. There's an attachment to the action request that lists...
The list in the action request lists nine agencies, and it does total the total amount of funding. So I thought it was going to be 10 agencies, but there's only nine listed. So you can follow up later, but I would like to see the breakdown.
Yeah, that sounds like a typo in the action request, so I'll follow up with you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see none. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 63, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal. Stuck. Sparks. Ponstein. Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King. Morse. Morales. Merchant. McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman. Hildenbrand. Hennessy. Halsted. Faber. DeBoer. Vice Chair Burrell. Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 63 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Item 8I, and I will call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move Resolution Number 64, the amendment to the Kent County Insurance Authority intergovernmental agreement from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Vice Chair Burrell. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is public comment related to general county matters. If you'd like to give public comment, please come forth, give your name and address. You have up to three minutes.
How y'all doing? I'm Dee Jones, passionate entrepreneur and visionary. I'm very, first off, Danny, you could have put off the Gucci bucket hat. I got this in Dubai. It was pretty cool to go out there in Dubai. It's official, too. I think you could pull it off then, especially in the Lexus. So first off, I wanted to speak to y'all about a couple of cool things about 3D printing the houses. I told y'all it was going to be relentless, Ben. I told y'all it was going to be relentless. I'm very relentless. I'm very, very relentless when it comes to my pursuit of my goals, and I'm never going to change who I am. And 3D printing houses is coming to Kent County early 2026. As you guys seen, I gave you that handout, and Ryan Kilpatrick is speaking to contractors virtually to actually figure out which contractor can actually help us pull this off. I'm super excited because I've been speaking about 3D printing housing, as I spoke about, and I've seen Dick DeVos share the article of LinkedIn naming our city. The city on the rise for tech and product production and insurance, and I know Lindsey Teal, you guys are enjoying that because I know your family is involved in insurance agencies, so I'm pretty sure y'all gonna be getting pretty rich around Kent County and the city. It's gonna be pretty crazy. But as I was just saying, though, like, I'm super excited because I already been, like, I follow trends, I read a lot, and I already knew where technology and things were going in the future, and now I'm the pioneer. I'm the person who helped the school district build the six esports labs. I'm the person who helped KDO invest hundreds of thousands into infrastructure. I'm the person who helped the 17th Circuit Court invest into esports and develop a sustainable program. And I would have liked to speak to the court administrator. He should have gave me a nicer letter for all the time, passion, and energy I put into that program, and I did that completely free without y'all giving me anything. Also, I just want to speak on me. I got a couple dates. So today, I just got a couple dates from Fox 17 for us to go on TV to speak about the e-sports finals, having colleges, universities, high schools, and schools all across the nation coming here to the DeVos place. And I actually got a couple dates. I was trying to find a date that aligned with the Kent County Board, but I think the only one is like November 6. So I just want to tell y'all that the playing and the level and the wavelength and the universal energy I'm putting out here is pretty huge. And I know everybody's going to hear about this from the billionaires and y'all. Y'all gonna, y'all gonna give the due diligence to black people and acknowledge the power and the passion and the beautiful things that we do, because not only am I going to be helping bring the largest in-person finals, one of the largest in the United States and the state of Michigan, but I'm also going to be 3D printing homes at the beginning of 2026. So I'm going to be a billionaire, trillionaire one day, and I got to give a presentation at the Computer Science from Michigan Conference in September. I'll see y'all in Lansing if y'all there. Y'all not gonna be there, but see you.
Thank you. Others?
Good morning. My name is Brandy Ritzma. I am a resident of Kentwood. I am a school employee, a community documenter, a community documenter, and a proud advocate. But for nearly a year, my ex-husband has alienated me from my children and erased me as a mother. He has withheld them from me, withheld child support, and filed repeated false police and CPS reports to harass me and harm me. These false reports are treated in court as business records as if they are truths, when in reality, they are not, and just simply retaliation. This is not co-parenting. This is the erasure, erasure of a parent. Judge Maureen Gottlieb has compounded this harm. She told my ex to tell our children that I am mentally ill with no testimony, no witness, and no doctor's diagnosis. She jailed me without due process for simply objecting and saying, "I do not understand." She racially profiled an elderly African-American woman, removing her from the hearings because she didn't like the way she was moving her lips. And she also didn't like her head covering that she wore. Remind you, she's elderly. Most alarming of all, the same judge has openly stated on the record that my constitutional rights were violated by CPS. Yet she continues to harm me by denying me my children, ignoring contempt, and enforcing false narratives. That is not justice. It is an abuse of authority. And then, despite saying publicly and in court that there were no public funds for guardian items, Judge Gottlieb handpicked one herself, Stacy Van Dyken, after all hearings were completed, at the taxpayer's expense, while reunification therapy for my children has never been funded. Ms. Van Dyken filed a false police, a false report that contradicted CPS findings, ignored school records, and then withdrew it after the judge had already relied on it against me. That is misuse of public funds and is a direct assault on my family. Meanwhile, I've been stripped of my financial stability. For a year, child support has been withheld, and now without any child support order, without notice and without lawful authority, half of my disability income is, poof, gone, goes to my ex. I am an agent and disabled, yet the very systems meant to protect families are being used to impoverish me and erase me as a mom. Meanwhile, I work for a school. I have been stripped financially. I can't, I can't, I stand before you because this is bigger than my case. If a father can erase a mother through false reports, if a judge can racially profile citizens and overreach her power, and even after admitting constitutional violations, she continues to harm a parent, then no family in Kent County is safe.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Yes?
Shannon Tanis again, displaced in Kent County. I gave notice to this body, especially you and Al, regarding the Department of Health and Human Services Board and the multitude of open meetings violations. And I wrote a resolution to this body, and I have not gotten engagement, but I appreciate your overassertion during the first public comment, Mr. Green, to de-minimize the capacity for us to speak on matters. I had a, one Sandra from the County Administrative Office call me on the 25th, which I found kind of odd because I had already spoke to people out of the County Administrative about this in the very beginning, and they gave me some information. But Sandra's demeanor to deny the violations that I have documented, considering I've already got an email from the legal department, from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, that acknowledges the multitude of violations that this local body has been doing, and that the negligence of this body to do the oversight to make sure they're doing basic proper procedures and transparency to not violate the people's rights or my rights. When she was flustered with me, she thought she hung up the phone, but she didn't. And she just started communicating with someone in the office next to her about our conversation. I actually have it recorded. I've given Mr. Commissioner Womack the full recording and Laura Latham, the supervisor for the County Administrator. I appreciate their engagement with me and to get down to the bottom of this. But if her mockery of me being a public journalist documenting public body meetings and then further acknowledging that this board has been in violation for three to four years, and then mentioning the fact of printing off a clean copy of something and giving it to Lisa, if this is any proof of any conduct of what you people are communicating behind the scenes about the people, when we engage you about official oversight and transparency and not violate our constitutional civil rights, how can we trust you to handle any other matter when it comes to neglect and abuse of our families and our loved ones within the system that we have to engage in these resources? So at this point, your authority is dissolution, because if you cannot oversight the budgets that you are appropriating for these people to continue to make these deficiencies and cause these harms onto the people, then you have no authority whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, I see none. We will move to Agenda Item Number 10, which is the Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Just a couple, whoops, just a couple of quick items today. First, a thank you to Jeff Dode, Keith Heibor, the entire team, and admin and fiscal and all the departments that work so hard on the budget. As has been noted, we approach our jobs and the work at Kent County that we can always improve something. So certainly, the budget process falls within that realm, and we do look forward to those conversations. Second, not to take issue with my good friend Stan Ponstein, who has an amazing record of public service that exceeds even mine. But I also feel the need to represent our staff, who are constantly looking for ways to doing things better. And if there's any fault in there, it's your administrator who may not communicate that, but every budget you get includes ways that we have looked to streamline, improve cost. Just a couple examples. One would be the Insurance Authority. You recently voted to amend those documents. We're this close to getting state approval. In 30 years, there will be tens of millions of dollars in that Insurance Authority, and it will have the capacity to pay for risk-related items and give the general fund relief. So it will be a tool to reduce reliance on the general fund. That's an innovation that came to the Board that the Board approved. And little things, like we went to electronic agendas in 2022, and we changed how we replace laptops on a schedule that centralized, that will save money and make sure staff has the best equipment. So again, not intending to quarrel with anyone, but I think it's important to acknowledge staff efforts in being innovative in how we approach our daily jobs and trying to minimize cost and maximize benefit for Kent County. Again, I think since I've been back at Kent County, and again, not intended to take issue with anyone, but I think I feel a role to make sure that when things are said publicly and they're broadcast publicly, it's important to make sure everyone understands the authority of the Board of Commissioners and/or administration. Certainly, the issues that you've heard today, whether it be guardianship or circuit court, we have members of our population that feel very strongly about these things. And certainly, the Board of Commissioners always has a role of inquiry or convening folks. But as far as authority, the Board of Commissioners has no authority over those processes. You have authority over funding those processes, but you don't have operational authority over those processes. You know that. I'm not sure that everybody in listener land knows that, which is why I make that comment. Also, we are looking into, the Board that was referred to is the DHHS Board, which is under the authority of the state of Michigan and not Kent County. But again, we can certainly and have looked into how they're conducting, posting meetings and all that sort of thing. And obviously, we'll review the recording and see, and just see what might lead from that. But so, that's it for today.
Thank you. And we will move to Agenda Item Number 11, which is reports. First and foremost, we have a change to the Zoo Museum Millage Subcommittee, an extension of the timeline that we created as a Board by my appointment of folks to that group that was set to expire at the end of September. This amendment simply moves that to the end of March of next year. So I'd like to call on Vice Chair Burrell to make the motion.
Thank you, Chair Green. I'd like to move...
Resolution 65?
Resolution 65 of today's date, Zoo Museum Millage Subcommittee Extension.
Thank you. Supported by Commissioner Teal. Questions, comments, discussion? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Are there any other reports from Commissioners this morning? Commissioner, oh, no, no report? Okay. Others? Four reports. Okay, I see none. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 12, which is miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner miscellaneous this morning? Commissioner LeGrand?
Thank you, Chair. I'll keep it short. I was really honored to visit Guiding Light in the last week or so and really see what they are doing down there. You'll be seeing a campaign soon to increase people's awareness that they have moved from general shelter and work training to really being a full-time recovery operation. And they're doing great work. I think that Commissioners Oliver King and Sparks are scheduled to go see them. And I just urge anyone who would like to know more about it, they're doing great work. You can let me know. I will get you in. And it's very, it's exciting work, and they're doing a great job in the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Green. A lot of times during miscellaneous, I highlight stuff in the community that I represent. And every now and then, we have a passing of an individual. I always kind of pause when I hear people use words like legends and pillars of the community. A friend of mine, or acquaintance of mine, Robert Johnson, passed away this week. A lot of people know Johnson. You probably know Robert Johnson, but this Robert Johnson had nine children, 23 grandchildren, and 27 great-grandchildren. I probably went through the same time through high school with five of the nine. He lived in Wyoming for a while and then moved to Granville when he took a job with Enterprise Tool and Die. Shortly after becoming an employee, became one of the co-owners, and it was a well-respected and employed a lot of people in the community there. But his, you know, his happiness for the, you know, community didn't just end by creating jobs. He was involved in the community, sponsored teams, refereeing, and everything else. But the one thing I do want to just point out more in fact is that I got a chance to serve with him on the Granville School Board. Bob served 22 years, five of those he was chair of the Board. And though I didn't serve all 22 with him, about 12 of mine was when he was on the school board. And, you know, I was blessed by knowing them, but the opportunity when I sat on that school board, if you reflect back at the other six people that I served with, it was a learning that I couldn't get from any textbook or any college course on how to do it. And it'll be hard for you to believe that in that first year or two of me being a school board member, I didn't really say a lot. And probably most of you said, "How could that be that Stan would be quiet?" But I learned so much just on how Bob and the rest of the members, you know, presented themselves, you know, how we approached problems and solutions and innovation. So I just want to say thanks to all the work that he did, everything that he stood for. I know a lot of the family members, and there is always some grief, but Bob was a man of faith. He's in a better place, and his legacy will live out through his children and grandchildren. And, you know, and I'll kind of end with this. Bob truly aligned himself with this proverb, actions speak louder than words, which has meant that what people do is more reliable indicator of their true attitudes and intentions than what they say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Others? Commissioner Boujack?
Thank you, Chair Green. I have a couple comments. First of all, I fully respect the decisions by this Board and my colleagues with regard to the budget, and it's a budget that I can and will work with. It's $650 million. I remember when those first two digits were reversed, when the county budget was $560 million. When my constituents ask what I do as a Commissioner, I tell them I spend $650 million every year. It raises some eyebrows. And I stand by my comments earlier, that I think the county can and should do more with less, that we need to reduce our debt, increase our capital fund, and lower taxes. And my final comment is in regard to a program on Amazon Prime. I don't know if you're all aware of it. It's called All Access PD, and it's the Grand Rapids Police Department Unfiltered. As county commissioners, we tend to be siloed in our districts in our thinking about what's going on in our area. And for me, it's a rural section of the county. But the citizens of the city of Grand Rapids are also Kent County residents, and we really need to be aware of what's going on in the city, because it does affect all of us. And I think if you want a real eye-opener...
And I think if you want a real eye-opener, watch this program. It's called All Access PD, and in the very first episode, our Commissioner Womack appears in that episode. And the reason it's important to Kent County Commissioners is because the Grand Rapids Police Department works very closely with the Kent County Sheriff's Department, and in this program, the Kent County Sheriff's Department appears many, many times. So, it is something that, you know, affects us and we should be aware of. I encourage you to watch All Access PD on Amazon Prime if you haven't. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna get your royalty check from what's his name, the Amazon guy. Bezos. All right. Commissioner Faber.
I will be very brief. Commissioner Halsted and Commissioner Hennessy and I had the opportunity to attend the announcement for the Greenway Project out in beautiful City of Lowell, and really, this is the legacy project we've all been dreaming of, to connect eighty-five miles of trail from Grand Haven all the way to the Ionia border, and I am looking forward to the many ways that we can support that project, as well as the partners that are along the corridor and all the placemaking that's gonna go along with it. I said this a couple months ago, but get your hard hats, shovels, and everything out, because the number of ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings we're having over the next three years is truly astounding, and I hope that you participate in those. And then, finally, at Finance Committee, our partner Housing Next gave a really great report on growth in our community. So, we talked a lot about growth and how that's driving maybe the expansion of government. How we grow is really, really important, and I think that report shows that if we really adopt this corridor study and continue to work with our partners in the townships and in the cities to put in zoning that puts that growth into those corridors, one, it's less expensive on our infrastructure, and two, it does generate additional revenue beyond just citing the next Arbeets or McDonald's. And that is our real chance at ever reducing property taxes, is by increasing growth in the corridors. So, I hope that everyone around this table will really embrace that study and the work that's being done, and then look for ways that we can really partner with our locals to make sure that that growth is happening in those corridors and not out in our rural farm fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Minor technical correction. That presentation was in the Community Health and Safety Committee, so if you wanna go look for it, that's where you'll find it. Commissioner Womack.
Thank you, Chair Green. Just wanna thank my colleagues for passing the budget, and even my colleagues that didn't vote for it, looking forward just to our conversation with them as we get ready for the 2027 fiscal year, looking into that budget, just seeing, you know, things they may have saw that we didn't see, because we have to work as a collaborative, and as much as we have to pass this budget to send those services, we do owe it to our constituents to try to spend as less money as possible. But so, I'm just glad we did get it passed, so that we're not holding up a lot of important services, as we see that happening federally and statewide, statewide with education. That money definitely needed to go through. Wanna thank Kaylee for a presentation from the probate court. And like Al said, as Commissioners, we don't have power over that legislation, and I know Kaylee and her partner and their position, they don't, but I thank the public for coming out, because the system as a whole, that we're giving some funding in a small portion there that has to do with that. There are people working in there that are doing a small portion, but the system as a whole could be swallowing up families, and even though we don't have legislative authority over that, I'm glad the people came out, because we do give our legislative opinions. We come up with our legislative plans each year, and we send it to the state, and if it doesn't make it on that, we also are in rooms that the public might not get a chance to be in, where we can also be a voice for them. So, I just wanna let them know that it didn't fall on deaf ears. And majorly, like I said today, just happy that we did get this budget through. Wanna thank Commissioner Teal, staff, and everybody that did work on it, and all our colleagues, all the meetings we had appointed. Just happy to be working with you, and I mentioned that as I closed, just to let the public know. That's one of the most important things we do as Commissioners. A lot of times, people don't know our job, but leveling these taxes, passing this budget, this is one of the most important things we do of the year, something we have to put a lot of more time in it, and as Commissioner Faber said, do some things to expand, to get the public a little more involved, so at that last meeting, they know what we're doing. Thank you, Chair Green.
Thank you. Anyone else for miscellaneous this morning? Okay, I don't see anybody. I'm gonna do something a little unorthodox. I'd like to... We have a work session scheduled... Well, it was scheduled for 10:30 or 10 o'clock on the Fuller Campus Facilities Management, all that. It's a pretty important discussion that we've been waiting to have as a board, so I wanted to see, ask the group by probably a show of hands, because I see people dropping off. How many of you have the time to give meaningful... Don't show your hand yet. To provide meaningful discussion and review of this presentation? Alternatively, I think we're gonna look at moving this to our next board meeting at September 5th. So, okay, now you can give me a show of hands if you can do that.
If we can stay at you?
Yes, in the affirmative.
Okay.
Yeah.
September 11?
Or the... I'm sorry, the 11th, not the 5th. Thank you. I knew that, but I misspoke. All right, that's not enough. We've already got a few people gone, so I'm gonna make an executive decision that we'll figure out how to push that. I'd like to offer my apologies to the folks that have been here and waited on this especially, so thank you for your work, but we don't... We wanna make sure we get this conversation right, and I wanna make sure folks have a chance to meaningfully participate in the review. All right, with that, we'll move to agenda item number thirteen. I'll call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, September 11, 2025, at 8:30 a.m., for an official meeting.
Moved and supported. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.